8:30, we'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, October 21st. And before we do the approval of the agenda, I just, we have a item on consent. And I don't need to have it pulled up, but there is a slight error on the date of the final payment. It has January 17th, 2025. We'd be waiting for that for quite a while. So I'm assuming that should read January 17th, 2026. So with that correction and that mitigation agreement, we move approval of the, or I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kravon, or Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried, all right. And next we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard and items not on the agenda? See none of the others, any online?
Do not, Mr. Chair.
All right, we will then move into approval of the bills and vouchers.
Do you approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kravonoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Next, we have the approval of minutes from October 7th and the work group session minutes from September 9th.
Do you want them together? Do you want the motion together?
Pardon?
Do you want the motion to include them both?
They can include them both, yes.
I'll offer a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kravonoff. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried, all right. Next, we have our request approval to rehire two open positions in the non-secure clips unit. Good morning, James.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm here today to request permission to hire two openings in our non-secure unit with backfill, if that would come about by current employees wanting the position. I brought this through PIC last week. It was approved. These are two positions that are pretty critical to have filled. We run 24 hours a day, seven days a week operation. And when these full-time positions aren't filled, they're being filled with sporadic variable hour that don't have the training that our full-time staff should have. And then it takes really hit to our overtime budget. It's more expensive not to fill it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to rehire both of the open positions, and that would include a backfill if applicable.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign?
While James is here briefly, if I might. James has obviously worked in an enormous capacity to help us lift the need to the legislature for the new non-secure facility. We heard last week that not only did we have the bonding house, hosted the bonding house tour, but the Senate House tour will be coming up to visit the facility as well. So thanks again for the work over there.
Thank you.
James? All right, next we have approval of Resolution 2025-27 for Operation Green Light.
I'm a little disappointed you didn't cue like a walk-up music.
I've got Mr. Vegas here this morning.
I know anything for you about Wednesday. Anything with cuff links at $30.
Good morning, Kurt.
Here to get the 2025 Operation Green Light.
Put your green light.
Yeah, put the green light on.
Here this morning to get the 2025 resolution read and approved for Operation Green Light starting November 4th through the 11th.
Okay, do we?
Do you want us?
Pardon?
We have it.
Yeah, we do have it, yes. Yeah, do you want to just start going on reading?
Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the resident of Clay County have great respect, admittance, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and?
Whereas the contribution and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens and?
Whereas Clay County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all and?
Whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civic groups, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access to more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year and?
Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future and?
Whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life and?
Whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service and?
Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans and?
Whereas Clay County appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted.
Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for veterans, Clay County hereby declares November 4th through 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service and?
Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Clay County will illuminate the Clay County courthouse with green lights and?
Yet further resolved that Clay County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights at their place of business or residence from November 4th through 11th, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve Resolution 2025-27.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have anything else for us this morning, Kurt?
Uh, no. It's good to be here. I don't come here very often.
You can change that.
Yeah.
I thought you were gonna hop on a plane and go to Vegas now, the way you're all dressed up.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next we have Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, public waters inventory. We have Wes is here, and Alicia? Good morning, Wes. I think we've talked on the phone regarding this.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me. I'm joined by my colleague Alicia Riddelen, and I have about 10 slides for you this morning to just walk through some of the basics of the public water inventory update that the DNR is working on, which I am the lead hydrologist for. So again, I'm Wes Saunders Pierce. I'm with the Minnesota DNR. And today, just to give you an overview of our public waters inventory update project, I'd like to share with you a bit about the project parameters, essentially the scope, how we're tackling this on a statewide basis, what it means on a county level basis, what that process is, and then where we're at and what you can expect for next steps. The project was initiated by a legislative change to the Minnesota statutes in 2024. Specifically, the change in the statute required the DNR to revise or update its map of public waters and to accomplish that by 2032. And so to support that effort, the Minnesota Legislature appropriated funds for that process, and I'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. So the public water inventory update will only address needed corrections to the inventory. We expect that this process will provide a better level of water resource protection, regulatory clarity by implementing the corrections, and therefore, an enhanced shared understanding of where and what are public waters. Certainly, the process will result in some waters being removed from the inventory and some waters will be added. Anything that is added to the inventory as a result of the process will be subject to the Minnesota Buffer Law regulations. So what this project includes is correcting errors in the existing public waters inventory. And one of the things that we're trying to be very clear about is when the original public waters inventory was done back in the 80s, it was a very robust process. It also involved a lot of discussion with landowners and local government units. And in many instances, there were hearings where people had concerns about what was being proposed or, you know, a difference of opinion. And during those hearing processes, there were decisions made to essentially leave things off the inventory or to have things remain on. So what we're trying to be clear about is all of those quasi-judicial decisions that happened during the original inventory are going to remain as they were determined. We're not going to reopen those. But certainly, if there are things that were errors, we would look at those. But to be a little bit more clear about what are the sorts of things we're currently contemplating as corrections, there are a host of designated trout stream tributaries on the order of a few thousand across the state that have been identified over a period of time through our Fisheries Division that we do need to make sure are evaluated for inclusion on our inventory. We also are going through the process to address adding water courses that were removed about 10 years ago by a commissioner's order, and that was a result of some discrepancies that were uncovered during the Buffer Map project.
I have one question on the trout streams. Please. What if it isn't a trout stream anymore?
Certainly, Commissioner, can you say a little bit more about what you mean if it isn't a trout stream anymore?
So how do you decide if it is currently a trout stream or if it is a trout stream? You actually sample to see if there's trout in the stream or?
So a little bit about that process, Commissioners. The process to identify a trout stream is carried out by our Division of Fisheries and Wildlife according to the rules that they have established. And it does involve a fair amount of physical measurements, so whether it's temperature or chemistry or things of that nature, anything that does fall into the category of a trout stream, whether it's the presence of trout itself or the conditions that are appropriate to sport trout, those are identified and put on a list by our Fisheries Division. And so they publish that list, and it's in a separate rule than our public waters inventory, but the cross-connection for our process is anything that does appear on the state list of designated trout streams is something that's eligible for our inventory. So the process isn't carried out by my staff or my team, it's by our partner division through their science in the field.
Just to let everybody, we do have a trout stream in Clay County, if you're not aware of that.
Yes, thank you for that. And other questions, or shall I continue?
So I just want to point out, we do have Kevin here from the Soil and Water and Matt are planning, planning and zoning director.
Excellent.
So Kevin or Matt, if either of you have questions during this, if you want to come on up and, okay? All right.
Thank you so much. A few things that we are not anticipating this project to include is we are not going to the level of detail to establish ordinary high water levels, nor will the process focus on revising any ordinary high water levels. From a digital mapping standpoint, we don't anticipate adjusting line work precision. That was a strong point of emphasis about 10 years ago with the Minnesota Buffer Map project, and we don't feel that's the focus of our project. We simply want to know what needs to be on or off our inventory. Other things, naming or names is not something that we're going to be looking to make adjustments on. And then I would also say for the purposes of, for instance, the trout stream tributaries and other things that are added, while they will be part of the buffer process, Buffer Law process, we are not going to automatically have shore-land classifications for anything that's added. That would simply be part of our normal process where we would review a local government's ordinance, should they have a amendment or an update that they are looking to entertain. From a statewide basis, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe in your packet, there was a fact sheet from our project webpage that describes some of this as well, but the counties will be updated on a statewide basis on a quasi-alphabetical approach. And what we're doing is we're tackling this process so that we can average 12 counties a year, but we want to have one county underway at any given time in each of DNR's four regions. And so that's why it's a quasi-alphabetical approach, because we're tackling four different regions at the same time, so it's not literally an alphabetical approach purely. But to support our process, and again, this is something I mentioned on the beginning where we were, provided some funding, so that was guided towards hiring five full-time employees for the purposes of the project, so they're temporary positions in that way, myself and then four regional specialists. And my colleague Alicia is a specialist for our Northwest Region. We're using the best available technology to conduct this project, and one of the things we're doing is we're really using our internet-based tools. So we have a project webpage, and on that we're having a variety of resources. We have an interactive county map, so people can always see what the status is. We have a process description, so a text and a diagram, which I believe is in your packet, and I also have a slide for that, as well as a fact sheet about the project. So a little bit more about the county process itself, and again, we have a diagram that illustrates this, but I'll just go through these bullets and then I'll talk a little bit about the diagram. But the county process begins by the DNR sending a notification letter to the county, and the letter also is sent to the SWCD district manager, as well as watershed district administrators for counties that have watershed districts. So it's sent to the county as well as partner agencies. That begins our technical review process. The purpose of the technical review process is to prepare a map of preliminary corrections, and so we provide that to the county with the, and the stakeholders with the intent to provide opportunity for review and comments. At the time that the preliminary map is provided, we will also be issuing a landowner notification letter to any landowner that would be potentially affected by any corrections, so they would receive that information as well. After the preliminary map is provided, we would have a 60-day window for public comments, and within that 60-day period, we would have a public meeting. And the public meeting will be held in each county, and the preliminary map, the information that's provided to the county, to the landowners and other stakeholders, provides all those details about where the public meeting is, when it is, how they can comment, and so forth. So after that comment period is completed, we'll make any modifications and finalize our corrections for that county. At that point, we will have a provisional final map, and we want to make sure that people have an opportunity to review that provisional final map before it does become the official final map. And at that point, we'll essentially have a period where for that particular county, there's just a waiting period, and if there are people that still may be aggrieved or want to challenge a decision that we've made, there will be an opportunity for those individuals or parties to request a commissioner's review, essentially a hearing. So it's very much a parallel of that original process back in the 80s. So once that's concluded, then the final map and the list will be published for that So graphically, it looks, it looks like this. We have a little diagram where we've broken it down into essentially three major phases. We have the preliminary review phase, which includes notifying the county, undertaking the technical review, and preparing the preliminary map. Once that preliminary map of corrections is ready, we would then issue it along with the landowner notifications. You can see that second phase, the external stakeholder outreach phase, includes the comment period as well as the public meeting, and then anything that needs to either be reviewed additionally, if we get comments about things that we haven't already addressed, or if something needs to be rereviewed, we would handle that during that time. Then the final review phase, as I mentioned, we would prepare a provisional final map. We would have a 90-day period where folks, if they wish, would be able to request a commissioner's review for any particular decisions that they were looking to challenge. And then at that point, we would complete that process, prepare the final map, and then move into the publishing stage for that data. So I do have some information about where we're at and where we're going, but before I move into the status and the next steps, I would just take a slight pause. I know I went over a lot in a short amount of time.
All right, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Kravonoff.
Thank you. Just a few basic questions. Public waters, so how do you identify them? Are they new photos, or how do you know about that? And then second, is there a certain size that may say public water? And then third, if you determine a public water that's currently on private land, I'm assuming, then does that, is that land, is it a public easement over that land, or is that private land now turned into public property, and then is that adjusted as far as our worthless land for property taxes on valuation?
Okay, that's super to have those questions. So the first one, how are public waters identified? What we look for particularly is the statutory criteria. So for water courses, so that would be streams, things of that nature, we have separate statutory criteria. We have statutory criteria for wetlands and then for lakes, what we call basins. So how we identify them, first of all, is we look to the criteria that's in statute. The, I think the intent to your question was more like through the technical review process, perhaps, like what are the resources that we're using? So we have a host of resources that we use to evaluate the landscape against the criteria that are in statute. So we have not only access to aerial photos as well as contour information, we look at past county historic surveys like the General Land Office map, and so there's a host of information, evidence that we look for to evaluate the, whether it's a water course or a wetland or a basin against the statutory criteria. So we have a technical review process that we've set up that we're implementing, you know, for every county across the state for the things that are potential corrections. The second question I have was about size. And so we do have size criteria in particular, we do have size criteria that are very explicit for public water wetlands. And so those are part of the things that we're currently looking at is to make sure that the public water wetlands that we have in our inventory do align with the statutory criteria for size. So for unincorporated areas, the size threshold is 10 acres, and that's also married up with what kind of wetland it is, what the type is, without getting into the technical details. So it's a size and a type that both have to be satisfied. But the, the third question?
To do with private land turning into public land?
Yeah. So the identification of a public water does not change the land disposition. So there is no easement, there is no, I guess, transaction or change in that land control. However, the most important thing, and this is one of the things that we're trying to make sure we put into our landowner letters, is, you know, the fact that the, there may be a public water that's identified on private property does not mean that the public can access that. There's no trespassing on private property. So those are some of the things that we're making clear in the, in the letter that we provide to the landowners. But there's no, you know, public easement that gets imposed or anything of that nature. Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner. What if it's a man-made lake or wetland, if not done anything right now?
Yeah, Commissioner, the, I'm glad you asked that, because one of the things that we're doing is making sure that we evaluate what, you know, in those instances, what the condition was at the time of the original inventory. Sometimes there were existing wetlands that were maybe deepened for the purposes of stormwater management and now have, you know, a purpose of flood control. But since it was an area that was previously a water resource, you know, those are ones where we would interpret that as being still eligible for inventory. Things that are more genuinely artificial, we would not look to include those as a correction or include those in our inventory. And so we would look at, you know, was this actually upland, if, you know, not a wet area? So areas that are upland that become through the course of manipulation, you know, a water feature are not something we're intending to include on the inventory.
So Wes, these public waters that you're dealing with and defining, these are Minnesota public waters, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's different than the other quarters of the United States?
Mr. Chair, that's correct, yes.
All right, do you have more?
I do have two slides just to help you understand where we're currently at and where we're going. In mid-August, the DNR notified the first wave, if you will, so the first four counties. So that obviously includes Clay County, Aiken County, Benton, and Blue Earth Counties. As I described, the notification letters were sent to the county as well as the SWCD and any watershed administrators. And we also did some additional outreach through our gov delivery mechanism, and we have information on our pub, public, on our public-facing webpage. So that's how we notified the parties of where we're at. I have had the opportunity to speak with Aiken County, I've had the opportunity to speak with the Wild Rice Watershed District, so I very am grateful to be here to help you understand where we're at. And so where we're at right now, in addition to all those notifications, we have been in the process of carrying out the technical reviews for those four counties. And our next step will be to share that preliminary map of corrections and information about the public meeting. And at that point, we would then activate our web-based tool for receiving public comments so that we can have one, like, shared repository that all that feedback gets funneled to. So that's where we're at right now. Again, we've been underway for a little over two months, and I am very glad to have the opportunity to come and talk with you about our process. If you have more questions, if you have time this morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'm happy to entertain those. If you have follow-up questions, I am available as well.
I do have another, so when you're going out and you're redoing this inventory? I do have another, so when you're going out and you're redoing this inventory, are you physically on different properties reviewing them?
At this point, we're using our desktop tools to the best of our abilities, so that if we're able to make determinations using the aerial photos and contours and things of that nature, that's our approach. It does not appear at this point that we, you know, have to do a field-scale effort to get the preliminary map of corrections put together. That's kind of the way it's looking right now.
Yes, Commissioner.
So you started August 15th with Clay County. Where are you actually at at Clay County right now, going through all this?
So, excuse me. So we've gotten through about two-thirds of the work for the technical review. We think that the preliminary map may be forthcoming later in November, potentially early in December, in that timeframe. It's still subject to, you know, getting everything closed out with our reviews, but that's where we're at. Generally speaking, the same is true for the other counties as well.
So with being two-thirds roughly through Clay County, how many extra waters have you found?
The, our process has involved basically a statewide screening for things that we have as known corrections. So the things, the examples that I mentioned to you. What I can say right now is, you know, with Clay County, so like, the average, like, out of 87 counties, roughly the average is a few dozen corrections that we've tentatively evaluated. The bulk of those are water courses. Obviously, it changes where you are geographically in the state. Clay County is less than the average in terms of the number of corrections, but we also know that through the comment period, you know, we may get more requests. You know, stakeholders may request things that we haven't considered, either for additions or removals, but that's about the scale of what we're looking at for Clay County.
But you'll be notifying everybody with additions, correct? Or everybody that has waterways?
Addition, potential additions or potential removals. Yeah, yeah.
Have you ever removed anybody?
Through the course of our process, I do want to be, I want to slow down and be clear about this. So the DNR did not have the authority to make corrections in the inventory until 2005. Statute was changed in 2005 to give us the opportunity or the authority to review, make corrections. So through the course of time, in the last 20 years, there have been a few case-by-case decisions that have been made for things, and some of those have been delisting.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, serving on the Environment Natural Resources Policy Committee. We're well aware of this. I know you'd reached out to the county early, and I appreciate the presentations to the different jurisdictions. In regards to the public meetings, are you anticipating that each individual county is hosting that open dialogue, or is that something DNR hosts? Or, I mean, I'm just wanting to know what that process is, so the public also knows.
Yep, absolutely, Commissioner. And we will be taking all of the responsibility for funding, coordinating, facilitating, and managing the public meeting process. We will be having it near the county seats for the counties. So that is one of the things that our review specialists are doing, is identifying the location, trying to determine the appropriate time, and so forth. To that end, if there are particular places that are common or are suitable, we are open to suggestions, but that is something that's entirely the DNR's responsibility.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Matt or Kevin, do you have any questions at this time?
I have a question maybe for Matt. If we have a new public waters determined in Clay County, how can that impact what it might currently, is there any zoning issues involved with that, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think what would have to happen with, for, if there are any public waters that are removed, for example, that have a shoreline zoning designation, we would want to have a zoning map amendment to that, and same for those that have, potentially would be added as well. And that's all done at the local level, so that's something that'd be our responsibility to do.
That'd be important to kind of know which ones are added, so that we can make the necessary.
Yep, yep. And I think it'd be nice if we could just do that all in one hearing as well, depending on the number of changes.
Okay.
I did have one other question. So as part of the process, are you looking at, in Clay County, we have a number of old inactive gravel pits, quarries, things of that nature. If those newly created water features would meet the criteria for public waters, would those be candidates for being added?
At this point, our view is, if that was, so I'm, let me just, let me just make sure I can ask the question back to you. So you're asking about old quarries and mines that are not on the inventory, would those potentially be added? At this point, we haven't identified that as a potential correction. If there were a request at the, through the comment period for us to look at that, we certainly would take that into consideration. But at this point, we haven't identified that as a potential correction for Clay County.
Thanks.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you, Wes, for coming, and we'll be watching for your future progress on this.
Very good, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a presentation from Morehead Public Schools regarding their operating levy presentation. Good morning, Brendan.
Awesome. All right, well, thanks for having me this morning. Excited to present to you what we have on the ballot here this November. So thank you for providing me some time today to present to you. Here at Morehead Area Public Schools, we have a mission, and that mission has been here since I've been here, and I arrived in 2014. And I have the feeling that the folks that worked on this mission statement long before I got here did such a good job in their forward-thinking that this mission statement could probably stand the test of time, as our world is consistently changing, as we just got done talking about watershed and those sort of things. So just wanted to share our mission with you. Some of the things over the last decade that we've accomplished and that we've been proud of is, number one, quietly, our enrollment has grown over 30% in the past decade. And to support that growth, we've had some recent building projects. We have the 2019 Morehead High School building project here, along with the Career Academy. But we could also mention here the 2015 Building Bond, which was the Dorothy Dodds Construction, Horizon West, and some Safe and Secure Entrances at our, at all our other elementary schools. And then we have some specialized programs, like our ELL, continue to expand that as our population becomes a little more diverse. But we've also implemented a BAR program, which is a building asset reducing risk program, which originated at Horizon on the east side, was expanded to Morehead High School, and now is being piloted at one of our elementaries. And we're experiencing great success with that. What the building assets and reducing risk program is, is a program where our teachers are grouped and they're assigned a group of students. And during the big bar, big block meetings, they call them, they focus on students and where they're at academically and where they're at socially and emotionally. So we are allowed time to actually get our staff together to talk about students and where they are at. Our K-12, our K-2 literacy proficiency with some local assessments has scored the highest we've seen since COVID. Then, of course, our activities programs, looking back last year especially, we had a great fall with our football program, we had a great winter with our both hockey programs making it to state, the boys' program winning state. We also had a wrestler achieve state championship as well. And then our basketball, boys' basketball program, who went into the section tournament as the lowest seed, ran the table, and got to the state tournament and gave the ultimate challenge to the eventual state champions in Wayzetta. Moving into the spring, our boys' baseball program qualified for state for the first time in 25 years, and we cannot forget about our speech program, who won their ninth consecutive state title as well. So just a great year all around last year. Like you at the county level, we at the school level have our challenges, and here, we like to explain them in terms of funding. And when most of our revenue comes from the state in a per pupil payment, over time, since 2005, that formula has not been able to keep up with inflation. So as a result, the state is actually, when compared to inflation, contributing about 18.6% less to our general formula than they did when compared to 2005. That combined with below-average local funding, with us having a local voter-approved levy of $224 a pupil, when the state average is around $1,200 per pupil, that really puts us at a disadvantage. And then, of course, that combined with, we currently have no capital projects levy in place as well. And then the third bullet is, when it comes to school districts, we really have limited options to generate additional revenue, and that forces us, like many other school districts, to either reduce expenditures, or try to increase revenues, or a combination of the two. And we've done, we're trying to do the one, we've done the other, and that's what is here, coming up here in November. Some other things that make it challenging sometimes is, down in St. Paul, there are things that happen there that come out of St. Paul, and I'm not here to judge whether it's right or wrong, I just want to here to talk about the impact. And there's a financial impact to some of the things that happen in St. Paul, and they come at times with no funding. And I take the first two bullets there. You will also be dealing with the paid family medical leave come January 1, just like we are. Curriculum requirements, so I'll give you an example. In 2023, the state implemented the REED Act, and every district had to accommodate or make those curriculum adjustments. And again, the validity of the REED Act is, I think the change is welcome. However, we had to invest in a new curriculum, to which we got $300,000 from the state, but that new curriculum was an investment of $1.6 million to the district. So again, that would have had a capital impact on us. And right now, bullet number three that I have listed there is what we're watching closely. Right now, that is covered by the state, but I, we always want to be aware in case that does not continue down the current path in terms of its funding, that we anticipate that eventually the school district locally will be taking on those expenses. That hasn't been the case, but we'll be monitoring that every two years to see if that continues to stay the same or changes. Some of the things that we've done here locally to continue to reduce our expenditures is we continue to look at ways to retrofit our districts through LED transitions, through our lights. And right now, we did one that gave us an annual savings of about $49,000 plus a $35,000 rebate from the Morehead Public Service. We continue to look at how we can utilize HVAC upgrades to produce annual savings for operational costs. And we did, we did apply for a grant and received a grant, which was a savings to our capital side of the budget, and we ended up acquiring three electric buses. And that also includes the equipment and infrastructure that will be put in to help support those electric buses. Now, I do want to say with a caveat that in the past, we've never applied for these types of grants before when it came to electric buses, because the general rule in the past was that we had to get rid of a diesel bus for every electric bus we would acquire. And they had changed that requirement, so now it wasn't a one-for-one. We get to keep the three diesel buses as well as acquiring the three electric buses. So we believe that that was a capital improvement for us, as purchasing and acquiring new buses was what we did have on the list originally to reduce or delay the purchase of. And then through some supply chain improvements, we were able to save some dollars annually operating-wise. And you wouldn't think that buying paper products and garbage bag liners is a huge savings, but when you can buy them in bulk and store them at the operation center and then deliver them on an as-needed basis, we do save in our supply chain and our operational costs. So these are some of the things that we've done here over the years to continue to try to save dollars operationally. So when we compare to the region in terms of voter-approved levies, I just want to compare us to our peers. And I've got my favorite peer sitting over to my left here, and DGF is at the top of that. They do not have a voter-approved levy currently in play. But then I want you to take a look at Bemidji, and then us at Morehead Public Schools, and all the way down to Norman County, Easton Yule, and Hitterdale. I do want to note that DGF is obviously here, because they're on the ballot here in November. Also Alexandria, that's on the list here, they're on the ballot here in November as well. They're doing a capital projects levy for the tune of about $600 per pupil as well. And I think it's worth noting, too, although it's not in the presentation, MREA, Minnesota Rural Education Association, came out with a, some information on Monday, I think, that's timely to talk about the need across the state. And when looked at across the state, there's 22 school districts that are going out for capital projects levies that if they were to pass, would equate to about $621 million across the state. There are other school districts out there. There's one district in particular to the south of us that's going out for a building bond and a capital projects levy. There are $976 million in 24 school districts that are doing building bonds. Six of those have two questions for a total of 30 ballot questions. And then, of course, this November, there are districts that, who are asking for an operating levy, and that operating levy is averaging about $818 per pupil. So I think that that's timely, that was timely information here come Monday. So just wanted to bring that to your attention as well, that it's not just a Clay County public school, public schools thing, that this is across the state in terms of the need. So we got our local comparison, and then what we do is, we also want to compare ourselves to districts that are similar to us in size. And you'll note that we have St. Michael Elbertville listed there. They do not have a voter-approved levy in place yet. That's not because they didn't try, they just haven't been able to get that passed. There is Morehead there in blue with the $224 per pupil, and then all the way up to Hopkins and Burnsville. And I like to use Burnsville as the example. They have a $2,200 voter-approved operating levy and about a $600 voter-approved capital projects levy. So just on their levies alone, voter-approved, they generate in additional $20 million per year to our about, little over $2 million per year on our voter-approved. Why is this important? It's important because we need, we need this operating levy to help stabilize our budget and protect our student programming that's currently in place. We do have a two-question levy on the ballot here in November. Question one is a capital levy. Question one is a capital, is not a capital project, but it's an operating levy. And that would generate about $4.37 million per year at the current enrollment. And I say at the current enrollment because this is on a per student basis. If our enrollment were to start declining, obviously the amount we would generate would be less. If the amount of students we had were to increase, the amount of revenue that we would produce would be more. But I want to make it clear that it's on a per student basis and it's not just a flat amount. Question two is a capital projects levy that generates 1.5 million per year for the next 10 years. I will point out that as a, in the 2023 legislative session, they did allow, they do now allow the operating levy to be approved by board vote. If you were to, if the board were to extend it without adding any amounts to that, the board has the ability to extend it by board vote. The question two or the capital projects levy has not received the same support for that. So 10 years from now, if we look into our crystal ball and nothing changes legislatively, and the board determines that question two would need to come back, that would need to go to the voters again. If the board did not want to increase any of the 575, they could go and just approve or extend that by the vote of the school board. Delineation between the two questions, they're both critically important to the district. One is an operating levy. You can see what the purpose of the operating levy is there. And then question two is a capital projects levy, and you can see what that funds. The reason for both of them is if question two passes, it keeps question one there to support the programs, the day to day operations of the school districts. And question number two then goes to allowing us some financial support to continue to purchase the things that we need to purchase on an annual basis to continue to move the district forward.
Brandon, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
On question one, is the annual amount that would be collected based on active enrollment?
Yep. Yep. So it's 575 a pupil, and that would go up or down based on the number of pupils that we have in the district.
So the, so the amount that would be levied to a homeowner could change each year?
It could change each year based on enrollment. It could go down if our enrollment were to decrease. It could go up if our enrollment were to increase. But based on what we know today, those are the numbers. Thank you. It's 575 plus the 224. The 525 would be handled 10 years from now. The 224 would be handled in the next couple of years because that tenure is up. That 224 could be extended for another 10, and then it would have to go to the voters for an extension of the 224. The seven, the 500 one that we have on the ballot this year could be extended at the 10 year mark. And then at the next 10 year mark, which would be year 20, that would have to go to the voters. And the capital projects one is, is a 10 year extension because the rules haven't changed for that yet. Did I get everybody's questions answered? Okay.
Just glad you included a mojo kid that actually graduated in the photo. I'm impressed.
Yeah, we made sure that that one was in there.
I appreciate that. It was signed. His grandpa handed it to him.
His grandpa did hand it to him, I have to say that, yes. So why the two questions? I think we talked about that earlier. They, they are critically important to the district, but again, they serve two different, two different missions in terms of the why. And the tax impact on this slide is question one, statistically, on a median family home, which is 250,000 in Morehead, statistically, they say that the further you can keep that impact away from $20 a month, the higher the likelihood that it is to pass. So that's why you see the 1,891 there per, per month. And then on the capital projects levy, that impact is $4.83 per month. When you combine the two, it's $23.74. And statistically, they say the further you can keep a two question ballot under $25, the more likely you are to pass. So that's why you see the amounts that were selected there. So really trying to go with what statistics require, or statistics have told us, and that's how we have identified the numbers that we have. So you see the tax impact there. And we know that if the referendum passes, pretty self explanatory, we'll be able to preserve programs, we'll be able to preserve our operations. And then if the program or the referendum doesn't pass, we're going to have to go back and make $5 million in reductions. And that will result in fewer teachers. It will affect some programming and it'll continue the budget instability. And I think that's important to mention because the majority of our revenue comes from the state. And we get a, you know, ideally, if you looked at our revenue in terms of like a three legged stool where you'd have each leg representing the federal, the state and the local. Well, right now, the, the state leg is a little bit larger, a little bit stronger than the local and the federal. But right now, there's a lot of instability with what's going on at the state level. I think you've got an item on your agenda that's coming that talks about that. And then some federal uncertainty as well. And so this local levy would really help continue to balance that three legged stool as we move forward. If not, we'll continue to maintain that imbalance and we'll continue to have some uncertainty in our revenue moving forward. And then, of course, voting, if you're a traditional voter, November 4th is your day. If you're a absentee voter or so, that process started September 19th, and you can do that at the district office. And then there's just some more options for you to gain a little bit deeper understanding from our website, vote152.org. And you can follow us on social media or our own district, district website as well.
One, one question, Brandon, one more question. Where, where is the election being held November 4th?
They're at the combined, well, we combine polling places.
Yes.
Or not all of them are the same. I think we have one that's shared with DGF on that side. I think we have a couple of other polling places. I don't have that in front of me. There was a required mailer, I think, that just arrived.
I have that. Would you like, I pulled it up.
Yeah, would you? Thank you.
So if you go to the one, vote152.org, it tells you where you can do it in person or by mail. And then on the 4th, on the 4th, you can vote at St. Francis de Sales, Cullen Hockey Center, Bethesda Lutheran Church, the Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd and Dilworth Lutheran Church. And then we can talk about yours as well when it's out.
So thanks for looking that up for me. It's not near what it is if it's a regular election year. But we did the combined polling places in anticipation that the board would want to call for an election last December. So thanks for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Lunick, for the presentation. It's, you know, really, I'm grateful to both of you for coming today. It's really important to get the news out to folks, but also for the public. I, I really want to talk about the spirit of collaboration that we have with the school districts in Clay County in regards to how do we serve all of our residents and particularly students in the most fiscally conservative way? And how do we leverage mutual resources? How do we work together to provide this high level, quality education component to folks? And, and your work with us at the juvenile center is something that we've talked to the state and they're blown away about how eager you are to, what do we have, four, five classes now over there? How eager you are to help us mitigate issues with kids to give them the best future. But also to that, we have also talked about challenges in dealing with legislative actions and how it affects us locally. And I think the public should know that we've been on trips with the school districts as well to talk about that and how we advocate for them. You worked really diligent with us on the burdens, on the tax rate with farmland. And I know you've been really careful in addressing that and how do we make sure that it's equitable. But I'll say that the rates aren't equitable. How the state dictates what resources can, and how they can be spent locally is really challenging. And, you know, if anyone has, has heard our meetings over the last year especially, it is really hard to continue to provide services in a manner that our, our community really wants and needs. And how do we address the vulnerable in our community as well? But, you know, we, as you, your boards as well, don't take lightly the tax burden that people are bearing. And so you're looking really critically. To cut $4 million last year is phenomenal. And, and I'll say, I, you know, as a person who has three kids in the district and, and elementary, middle school and the high school, parents have been really flexible with that. But it's, it's, they're going to be pain points to see an additional 5 million, as there would be in any organization.
Right.
So thank you for your work today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, this is kind of fortuitous. I had a chance yesterday to go to our restorative justice meeting. And three remarkable young men were Morehead School employees are there. They work with kids in, in our high school. It's great when the spuds win. You're really proud of the kids when they go to the debate and get a state championship. Those are wonderful things. And I work out in a gym where a bunch of spuds work out. I don't work out with them because I'm an old man, but great kids, whole future for them. And keeping them in this area with the, with the opportunity that they have to go to MSUM is, is a remarkable thing because we need to educate and keep these kids here. The Career Academy offers opportunities for a lot of kids to get an exceptional, high paying job if they don't choose to go to college. But again, that meeting yesterday, it isn't just for the kids who are motivated and lucky and smart and athletic and, and articulate. It, there is a real basis to be proud about this school district and what they offer to the kids that have problems and kids that have trouble and kids that are new to the country, new to the district. There's, they really try and facilitate an education for every kid here. It, it is even more remarkable when you look at the comparison on funding with schools of similar, or districts of similar size or regional districts. We, they, they have done a lot with very marginal funding. And I think this is justified. And I'm hopeful that we can continue to keep this district as functional and as productive as it is so our kids can continue to be successful. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Brandon. Thank you. Next, we have DGF. Good morning, Shannon.
I do have a handout, a little fact sheet, so this.
Is that what we got?
What did you get? Oh, you have the PowerPoint? I just have another little.
Sure. Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me as well. I don't want to be redundant and say the exact same thing as, as Brandon, but obviously public schools, we're in a similar situation, right? So I'll tell our story, which I think is, is also an important story because, because we deal with the same things as Morehead. It's just on a scale, right? It's, it's a different scale. I don't have a communications person, so your PowerPoint, you're going to see today, it was done by Shannon Hunstead. So hopefully you enjoy the show. And this is, and this is our leadership team, right? It's our school board. And I think it's important, when I've had our public meetings, to share this information because these are decision makers. And I would love these people to have more power to make more decisions and not have the state make them for us. I'd like these people that care about their community and our school more than the people in the St. Paul. And I wish they had that freedom to make choices with funding. But the rules are the rules, right? So there we are as a team. Like Brandon, I, the mission statement, and then I underlined a few things about DGF's mission statement because I came in 2021. I was a former teacher at DGF. I taught in, in the school district from 1996 to 2005. And now I'm back in this position. So it's interesting for me. So as I came back, I would still say there's probably a third of the employees are still there 17 years later. So that's been fun for me. But the underlying words here are vital. So does the community know Shannon Hunstead? Does the community know our school board? Do they trust and respect us, right? Trust is built on time, often. Respect is built on time and, and actions. And so when you come back, I, I think, I'd like to think that my time in the past at DGF was, was trusted and respected. I feel that, and that's a good thing. But DGF changed a lot in 17 years. There's a lot of new people, a lot of new families, which is fantastic. So those are the people that don't know me. And, and if you look, and Brandon lives this as well, the community needs to trust the leader. They need to respect the leader. You don't always like what the decisions we make, obviously. They're not fun decisions. I don't always like the decisions I have to make, right? But, but please respect it. And I guess that's, then the next part there is our students. We want them to be self directed. We want them to be responsible. And just like you or I, we want to be lifelong learners and those kids need to leave our place feeling hungry to learn. And, and I feel we do that. I, I kind of get right to the nuts and bolts of it. I like to share, here it is. I'm a visual learner. I think other people, when you, you know, you can read it and see it, and that's great. But when you, you know, can touch it and feel it, you learn more. So here we are. This is, Ellers put this together for all districts from 2005 to 2025. And that blue line there represents inflation. And the dotted line is the dollars that the school districts have received. Okay? So it just hasn't kept pace. You can see the blue line's higher than the dotted line. That's nothing magical there. The, the next bullet there though I talk about is they're already proposing a $420 million reduction in E12 spending for FY 2028, 2029. Well, that's not next year. And that's the year after and the year after. So I'm thinking as your superintendent, and this is what I say down below, as your superintendent, it's my responsibility to share this with you. And together we can navigate future challenges to ensure success for our students. This is real. And as the educational leader of our district, it's my responsibility to say, this is what we have or this is what we don't have. What do we want to do? The other part, and what I did here in this slide is I just took the past 10 years because we're going to be asking our taxpayers for the next 10 years. What's the previous 10 years look like? Well, when you look at this, this average funding shortage over the last 10 years has been short $740 a student. We're asking for 500. We're not asking for everything. We're asking for something that we feel, just like Brandon, is a passable number. It's a number that we think we can use to navigate the next 10 years. I didn't want it to be 200 and then two years from now ask for 200 and the next, you know, I mean, it's, that doesn't work, right? So we want to be fiscally responsible. We want to pick a number that's, I guess the board and I felt was doable. The glaring thing here on this slide though, if you look off to the right and, and really zoom in, the last five years, four, five years, it's when the states had the most funding. It's when we have fallen the most behind. And so I, I tell our public, I wish I wasn't here. I don't want to talk to you about that. But I also need to be here to show you that's the fact. We pay for goods and services, just like the county does, at an inflated rate. But we don't get the inflated dollar. You know, we had inflation tide, which was wonderful. It passed again legislatively that, that the formula is going to be tied to inflation. That gave us 2.74% to our formula. What the public also needs to hear is the formula constitutes or it adds up to 66% of our budget. The other 34% of our budget comes from other sparsity aids, declining enrollment, those types of things, transportation aid. So we have a chunk off to the side that nobody talks about that is coming in at less or right around 2%. So we have a chunk off to the side that nobody talks about that is coming in at less or right around 2%. Well, if I'm going to pay bus contractors 3%, I'm already behind, right? If I'm paying teachers 3%, I'm behind. It doesn't take long, as you move forward, to get farther and farther behind. And and that's really our issue. This is not a fun one to share with the county.
Shannon, can I ask you a question? On that, on the graph that you just had up there, is is this graph just now showing just DGF?
No, no, great question.
This is still statewide.
This is, this is a statewide average. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Good point.
And I'm wondering, are, is there, are there disparities based on different areas of the state when it comes to funding?
Well, and that's that 34% chunk that I'm talking about, for sure. Transportation, so let's say Detroit Lakes, they drive around lakes. It costs more to drive around to pick up kids, right? We're pretty fortunate. We are pretty square at DGF. Problem is, we don't get hardly any money then, right? Because it's pretty clean and simple. So that's one thing. ELL students, you get a little extra money. You get a little declining enrollment, like for us, last year, we had a little dip in our kindergarten number. Now we're back up again, which is nice to see. But then that affects that number. So yeah, there's, I'll give you, not to get super weedy, but this is kind of how specific it is. How many square miles per resident pupil unit? Well, last year, our ratio was .196789. I mean, those digits go on and on. It's kind of like pi, right? This year, our square miles per resident pupil unit is .23 and go on, right? 47,000 extra dollars we got this year. As your superintendent of public school, I can't predict that, right? And next year, and two years ago, by the way, we lost $57,000 in that same formula. So when you talk about, I mean, if you look at middle school finance, that's how weedy it gets. And then as your superintendent, just like Brandon and Phil and everybody down Highway 10, it's hard. There are some of these things you just can't control, right? And and that's, why didn't you know we were getting 47,000? Well, two years ago, I didn't know we were losing 57, you know what I mean? And I don't know graduation. Now I got a new kindergarten out by Felton. Hey, sweet, our square miles just went up. We got a couple, you know, it is what it is, but yeah. This one is just, this is again, state average. So to Chair Campbell's question is, is this just DGF? No, this is statewide. So this is, this is the difference between a public school and cities and counties. If you look at that number, the red dotted line is cities and counties, to stay up with inflation. Their current average number is 9149. If we go back a slide, if public schools were tied to inflation, we'd be at 8645. Counties and cities have had to make very difficult decisions with taxes to their public, correct? I mean, you live it, you guys. I don't envy your position either. You have the ability to say, we're going to do it. I hate it, but we got to do it because we got to pay the bills, we got to blah, 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 right? And I totally understand it. We don't have that freedom. We have to go to our public. And so since public schools have to go to the public, the blue line represents schools. They just don't get as much. And so that's the, that's the problem there is we don't, we don't go. Or if we ask, we get the no vote. Last year, there was 32% of the schools in outstate Minnesota that passed a referendum. It's why we didn't go. I didn't go last year. I should have gone last year to ask. It was a presidential election. Just like Brandon talked about playing the percentages, we played the percentages. The odds are that you're not going to pass it. And that was proven after the election. And the outstate of Minnesota did not pass at a very successful rate, like Morehead, right? So we didn't. We're going to ask this year because on odd years, the odds are better. That doesn't mean, it's it's kind of a numbers game, but it's kind of where we're at. We got to play the numbers game, I guess, so. So what have we done? This has been, this is, I've been here four years. This is year five, and it's been super depressing as a leader. I've cut, that says 11 staff members. Now, after our reductions this year, we're over 15 staff members. We've cut in our elementary, middle and high school. It says one administrator. I've actually cut two because we moved our special ed department to a cooperative in Holly, which has been financially great, but there's been a lot of learning curve in that. Retired tech person, didn't replace him. We've eliminated three bus routes since I got here. We've added 150,000 square feet to a building, which we super appreciate. We clean it with two less custodial staff. So when the superintendent comes into the room, everybody gets jacked up and excited, like, what are you cutting this time? And it's, it's just to try to survive. And it's not fun. It just hasn't been, it hasn't been a fun experience in that way. Open enrollment is a big topic at DGF. Obviously, with our neighbors Morehead to the, to the west, we, we are a small school. Some people grew up in small school and moved to Fargo-Morehead. And they go, wow, I'd like to have a small school. We are 1,535 students as of this morning. Not that we're keeping track. But we keep track of that every day. Anyway, so we're fortunate. These numbers that you see, the the underlying number is last year. And then now, because I just got the new data here a couple of weeks back, I added our FY '25. So we currently have 476 students now that come from outside our district. Barnesville, Holly, Morehead, wherever, they're coming from somewhere else, right? Unfortunately, we, we have 186 that leave us that also go to those same places. You can see the number of those moving in the right direction. So our plus minus on our open enrollment is plus 290. That's up 33 from last year. So obviously, state funding follows students. Tax dollars don't. And this is one of our issue with our local people. They say, well, the Morehead person now is paying taxes in Morehead, and they're just living off our dime. And and so trying to explain to the public, which is a challenge, I get it. There's other expenses. We're busing, we have counseling services, there's other things that are tied to students, right? So if you go to the bottom, we just say, hey, if we had put 20 of these kids in a classroom, and this was last year's number when I did it, the 257, we need 13 more teachers. It's going to cost us, you know, short of $1 million. But the dollars that come in from that open enrollment number is over 2 million. So we're net gaining somewhere around 1.5. Well, then some people say, well, you didn't put this and you didn't put in. So I created a whole new chart to really get into the weeds on open enrollment. And I've shared it with some people that have asked. We're still well north of $800,000 to the positive every year due to open enrollment. When I came here in 2021, I said, the reason you don't have an operating referendum is because of this right here. That's your operating referendum. You have a plus 200-plus kids coming to your district from outside. That's giving you the money to keep the operating referendum away. It's as simple as that. This is our ballot. Our ballot question is, we wanted one question. We, I met with people in Felton, we met with people in Dilworth, people in Glendon. The farming community in our three communities is is vital. If you're not a farmer, you're tied to ag land or ag in some form or some fashion. So we talked about a capital project levy and we talked about this. But the way it's taxed on the farmland, we decided we're going to leave them alone. They're important to our community and they've been super supportive and we appreciate that. So what we did is we went right for an operating referendum. It's $500 per pupil. We did tie it to inflation. The reason why we're going to tie it to inflation is very simple. It helps us when we get an influx in enrollment. And it also helps protect us a little bit when the state doesn't fund us. It's, yeah, pretty simple. Again, it's going to run for 10 years. And you guys asked earlier, you know, it can be renewed. If this, let's say this gets approved 10 years from now, the board would have the opportunity to renew it if if needed. If we felt there needed to be more money added to it, then you got to open that back up for another public vote, so, okay? And we wanted to keep it simple. We didn't want to confuse, this is what it is, it's the same for everybody. So now you'll see some of our slides here, talking a little bit, sharing with what Brandon was doing too. The far left right there is DGF today. After, so right now, we get $7,481 a student. And then all of those little 34% sparsity aids, you get up to 9234. That's how you get to that number. Those are schools in our region and our conference. And so what we wanted to show here is that if DGF passed this at $500 a student, you'd see where we'd fit. We'd be kind of right in the middle of those communities. So we're not, again, asking for the moon. We want to be in the middle and it's it's time for us to to maintain and and grow our programming. If you look to the left of us, let's, so we pass it, so we're right there in the middle in the red there. Fergus Falls went for an operating referendum last year, failed. Barnesville went for an operating referendum, it failed last year. So the people to the left of us are trying. There's another district there that's been in statutory operating debt recently. So they worked themselves out of it. But the people to the left are hurting and the people to the right are, I'll just say, are doing better. And we just want to be like the rest of them. This, this slide is is exactly Brandon's slide. And I I use this slide just like he does, but this one looks good for us because we're zero, right? But you know, you go down the line, just like Brandon said, they're going for more. They're at 224. And you you go down that list of schools, Thief River just recently passed a year ago, $900 per student. And they're basically the same size as us, so. Yeah, and and we know Norman County East. My previous superintendency was in Lancaster, Minnesota, right up on the Canadian border. I grew up in a little town, Argyle, so I was just south of there. But just like Norman County East, and you hit it, all those people are saying, we love our school and we're going to keep it open. When I was in Lancaster, Minnesota, they had theirs is over 3,000 per student. Why? They love their school and it's not going away. And there's a lot of school pride in that. And it's appreciated, so. Yeah, this is the tax impact, and then you find your spot. And 250,000 for us, you can see is about $22 a month. And so, yeah, it's it's doable, I guess, is what we felt. And that's why we're asking for it. One of the things, when we have public meetings, people don't know what they don't know. I always, it's not to insult anybody's intelligent, but intelligence, but I wanted to make sure they know that, hey, there's some refund out there. You might qualify for this. And so please look into these things with your tax provider or do your own research. So there are some opportunities here to get some tax breaks. And so don't forget to miss out on that because it could add up to $15 a month. It can add up to $10 a month. And pretty soon, now your impact, this operating referendum, is much less. What happens if this doesn't? This is, this is going to be probably, well, it will be the toughest, some of the toughest decisions, and I've made some tough ones already. We're going to have to sit down with our site teams and say, hey, we need to cut. And I gave, I gave my leadership team, all my directors and principals, I showed them the percentage of the budget they are today. And I told them, this is what you have to cut. 128,000 in high school, 117 in the middle school, 170 in the elementary, blah, 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 blah. And that's what this is. This is, we're going to be cutting some sick, obviously, our class size is going to jump at our current numbers today. It'll jump by four or five students a classroom. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I say, this is a board and site team. We're going to get data from all of our sites. We're going to bring it together and decide what is our top priority? What is something we can do without or hurts the least, impacts the least number of students? All of that, right? It's just, yeah, there's going to be a reduction of right around 750 to 850,000. And when we, we cut $566,000 out of this year's budget. Like I told the school board, and I've told the public at our public meetings, I can't cut our way to success. And I can't cut anymore without having a significant impact on our student learning. And that's what we do. Our job is to provide education and to give our kids the best chance. And we're slowly, that's slipping away because of our condition and our position. So progress. We, believe it or not, we still have done some amazing things at DGF. I I didn't throw our sports programs on there. I think they speak for themselves. We've been so fortunate in every season, fall, winter and spring, about the successes of our students and our our athletes, our coaches. It's, yeah, we're very fortunate to have what we have. And the commitment to athletics at at DGF has been second to none. The other part we talked about earlier, though, is we, we started an alternative learning program because we have a group of students that just get lost. Some of them in the past used to go to the Morehead ALC. They got, they didn't get run out, they just didn't feel like they were out of their community, right? So they would quit. We had a lot of dropouts, those kids that needed and had, that had skills that just weren't given a chance. We have teenage pregnancies, just like everywhere else. We have all these different things, homeless, homelessness. So we started an alternative, alternative learning program. We have now, in the last two years, have had about 13, 14 kids graduate high school, got their high school diploma because of this program. And so, yeah, we're super proud of that. We also added a new shop, a career in tech education, and that was part of our, it wasn't in our original building project. We were hoping to have a partnership with the Career Academy. Just logistically, it just doesn't work with transportation and travel time. It's just the requirements of the state on graduate requirements, it just, we couldn't make it work. We tried, we tried for two, my first two years here, and finally said, it's just not going to work. So we did decide to build the shop, which has been a huge success. Super proud of that. The other thing the district hadn't been doing in the past was staying up to date with curriculum. And so we've spent some significant dollars, you heard Brandon say, you know, redact, and they got some funding from the state. Yeah, so did we. It covered probably a quarter of our expense. So, you know, you just end up doing it because you need to do it. The other part, we, we, the last two things there is we created an MTSS. So it's multi-tiered systems of support. It meets every kid, whether you're at the lowest level to the highest level. We put you in groups at a time during the day so you can be challenged and learn the skills you need to learn. So if you're a gifted and talented, you get challenged. If you're a title kid and you're missing skills in reading or math, you you get with a group that, so you fit. It's not like you're going, oh, I'm not, I don't fit here. No, you're always going to fit in that little group for that time. And you also get the skills that you need to improve. And so we're excited about that. That was totally funded through a grant. So that was, we're very excited about that. And then the last thing, when I came back in 2021, I was shocked, number one, when I was here in the past, being a farm kid myself, that we still didn't have ag at DGF Public School. So we did hire, we have now two ag education teachers, one in the middle school, one in the high school. We started our FFA program, which has been nothing but a hit. And we're just super proud of that, so. If it passes, well, number one, we're going to maintain our class sizes. That's important to us, just like any other district. Our mental health and the people we have in place as social workers and counselors, we're proud of what they do every day. And we want to make sure that that can stay that way. And then our electives and our career programs, we want to continue to expand on that, much like Morehead has partnerships, right? We are in that same process. We met with Concordia again last week. We've met with MSUM as well, trying to get those same types of things set up. So really excited about what that can look like. Our other goal is to get our kids out of our building when they become seniors and go to work. Which means they're going to spend part of their day out at a, at a job that they hope to have someday. So, yeah, so those are things. And then maintenance, we have, with the adding of the shop, we have some dollars there that need to cover up that building project and also facility needs that, you know, we added on 150,000 square feet, but we still had 350,000 square feet that is not very new, okay? And so this is just our link to our website, our microsite regarding the referendum. I want to thank you again for your time here. I really appreciate it. I did, and I'm not going to talk about them just because I've been here long enough. This is, so when I've had my public meetings, people ask, why do we pay $22 a month? And down in Burnsville, they same dollar amount, they're spending $3 a month. It's property value. So when people at the state legislation say every zip code's the same and we're all equal, we're not. That map right there shows you the red, the red counties, or I'm not sure, I'm sorry, not counties, township or school, school districts. The red, you can see there's a pipeline that runs from the Raynard Lakes, Cross Lake area all the way up into up Hallock, way up in the corner. Iron Range has money, the metro has money, then there's some other lakes area. It's, it's just different. So we, if you, and I highlighted us, we're one of the lowest referendum market value schools in the, in the state. We just don't have a lot of industry, right? We have a lot of homes. We work in Fargo-Morehead, and that's awesome. And then, of course, ag land doesn't count towards it, so it kind of hurts. So who ends up paying for the referendum? Every house. And so that makes it more difficult. So, anyway. So, anyway, uh, I'm not gonna get into our free and reduced lunch and our universal meals, but our people are also saving money because the state has decided to give universal meals, like it or not. Uh, but our people do save some money, so I share that with them as well. And that's just some in open enrollment, so questions, if any, from the group?
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Hunstead, for the presentation. I echo the sentiments that I talked about when Dr. Lunick was here in regards to how active you've been in collaboration to help reduce costs wherever we can, so thank you for that. I just wanted to, I did pull up your polling places, locations, since I said I would do that, uh, on election day, uh, the Dilworth Lutheran Church, Glendon Community Center, and then the Felton Community Center as well.
Correct, yep, thank you. And we do have early voting right now, or absentee ballot, and that is at our district office, so. Yep. Other questions?
Well, Fan, thank you for being here, and, um, hopefully that our viewing audience will be able to, you know, look into the information you provided to help make those decisions.
Yeah, thank you. You guys enjoy your day.
All right, we'll do real quickly here, we'll, um, do the out-of-state travel. Good morning, Kimberly.
Okay, good morning, Chair Commissioners. Um, I am here today to request approval for out-of-state travel to attend the National NAPSS Conference. It's an identity and security conference in Washington DC that will be held December first and second of this year. Um, attending this would be part of, um, the work that I do on the vitals advisory committee, which is a committee of Mako. Um, and it's gonna be focusing on like digital identity and digital issuance of vital records. So I would be attending with the state registrar, other people from the state, and then another county that's attending as well. Um, the travel will be reimbursed by the county, or, excuse me, by the state, the county will pay for it upfront, and then we'll have a contract with the state to reimburse the county for those travel expenses.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request, uh, to go to the conference in Washington DC because it is being covered by someone else.
Second.
By Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Abinger, any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, request approval to add postage and handling fees.
Thank you. Um, so this last summer, or this past summer, we have implemented an online ordering system for vital records, so an individual is able to get our form online and submit that back online to us and then pay with a credit card, um, so they don't have to come to our office to request some of those records. Um, so when they do place that order online, we incur additional expenses that we don't have if the customer's coming into our office. We're paying for postage to send it out to them and an envelope to mail it in. So what I would be asking for is one dollar to cover the cost of those electronic orders, that will cover the postage and the cost of the envelope. Um, I'm short a little bit, but I know that postage is increasing in January, but I wanted to have time to notify the funeral homes that are ordering these electronically that this expense will start January one of two thousand and twenty-six.
Kimberly contacted me about this, and this is an additional, uh, convenience for her customers to be able to do this online ordering, but it comes with an additional expense, which I think that they'll probably be happy to pay, given that they don't have to come down and do this in person. So, uh, having said that, I'll move that we, uh, add postage and handling fee of a dollar to the electronic vital, uh, records orders, and I think that would be a fee that we would, we would need to add.
I'm second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Crepp. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, in regards to when this would be implemented, are you immediately, or January twenty-first, or January first of twenty-six?
January one of two thousand and twenty-six is what I would be requesting, so I'd have time to notify those.
All right, include that in the motion.
And your second?
Yeah.
My only question is, I, I don't know if that's enough to cover what that...
Not for like the larger, um, like when funeral homes order death certificates from us, that's not enough, but sometimes they order two or three orders in one day, and so then we would put them into one envelope for mailing, so they would be charged a dollar for each order. Um, it will not cover, but it'll at least get me something for some of those.
And, you know, in regards to fees and services, I've always been really careful to talk about additional pieces because I think part of what we tax our residents, I think that, that is covered for those services, but we're, we're talking about a convenience fee here, and, um, you know, having it take additional time out to particularly do that, I just wanna be careful that we're covering what the cost of this additional piece is. Would you anticipate, is this, uh, you know, January or June one of the year, tracking it, and then propose something for twenty-seven, what do you?
Yeah, I anticipate it will go up as the cost of postage and supplies go up, and I just kinda wanted to see what, um, how many of those kind of orders we're able to group in different things like that if we need to implement a different fee for the larger, um, the larger orders that the funeral homes request. Um, just wanted to try and keep it simple to start off with, to see for implementation if it will work or not. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The, the only comment I had was going off Jenny's there was, when stuff increases, do we want her to come back or just have it, put something in that motion that postage goes up five cents at the dollar, it's a dollar five now, instead of you coming back every time postage goes up, or?
Well, I already worked in the first increase that's gonna happen in January into this.
Okay.
For those, the orders that most individuals would request from our office.
I, in the future, I would be interested in you proposing something that, there's an equation, what, whatever that line item that your, your postage percentage of this is, um, in the future, we could look at some sort of automatic piece.
Yeah.
But I support this today.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
We will take a five-minute break. Question, we will continue with our agenda, the next item is a request approval to transition SNBC, net special needs basic care program from social services to public health. When are you gonna start this off?
I sure am.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, yes, we are here to request approval of a transition proposal. Um, I kinda wanna set the stage, as it is a little rather complicated. Um, what is SNBC? Um, special needs basic care is a managed care program, uh, adults ages eighteen to sixty-four, um, with disabilities who are enrolled in both medical assistance and Medicare. Uh, it provides a single health plan that coordinates their medical behavioral prescription Part D benefits and has care coordination attached to it. Um, the key purpose of SNBC is to simplify care for people with complex medical and social needs through one integrated plan, integrating the MA and the Medicare. Um, and then we bill Ucare for care coordination services. In Clay County, two hundred and seventy-seven residents are enrolled through the integrated portion of SNBC, um, and it has, it's historically been a really stable revenue stream for both social services and public health departments. Kind of a snapshot in time, this is how it's, uh, in operation right now. Social Services has two FTEs that provide SNBC care coordination, and Public Health has three FTEs. Um, you can see here, this data is based on the most current twelve months' worth of revenue that's generated. Um, Public Health does generate quite a bit more than Social Services in this department, so each staff in Public Health generates approximately two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in annual revenue, while Social Services brings in, again, this is each staff, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in revenue. Um, so it's about forty-seven percent more in Public Health. Uh, trying to figure out the why behind that, um, we split the caseload fifty-fifty between Social Services and Public Health, so their three FTEs do allow for a little bit smaller of a caseload to have a little bit more time. Um, Public Health is also kinda more accustomed to documenting the clinical nature of this work, and, and clients tend to view Public Health staff as more of their primary medical health-related staff versus a Social Services social worker. Um, I do wanna spend just a minute talking about how this revenue is generated, it'll become important later on. So every eligible member in Clay County, um, is put on for SNBC. We are able to bill Ucare twenty-five dollars per month for every eligible member. However, if our care coordinators are able to complete what's called a health risk assessment for these folks, we're able to bill a hundred and eighty-five dollars per month to Ucare. So there's a significant difference between kind of an engaged client versus just an eligible client, if that makes sense. Um, Public Health just seems to be a little bit better at completing those health risk assessments and getting that higher monthly reimbursement rate. Um, there is a change coming, which is, uh, the whole reason why I'm here today. Um, if you remember, a few weeks ago, uh, Suzie from Public Health came to request a position refill that we said we're gonna just press pause on at that moment, at that time, this information was not public yet. However, Ucare announced that it will be dropping Clay County and all but fourteen counties in the state from this integrated SNBC plan effective one-one-twenty-six. Um, that means that those two hundred and seventy-seven residents are gonna lose their integrated coverage and either must enroll in a non-integrated SNBC plan by about mid-December, which would require them to purchase Medicare Part D separately, so that's gonna be an additional out-of-pocket expense for those folks, or they can move to a straight MA plan, what's called fee-for-service, still having to purchase the Medicare Part D separately as well. Um, as a result of this, we are projecting between fifteen to thirty percent loss in SNBC enrollment members and corresponding revenue to go with that. We don't know exactly if it's gonna be fifteen percent or thirty percent, it depends on how many of those folks will choose to come back on a non-integrated plan. Uh, snapshot in time, as of last week, we had nine hundred and seventy-eight total members between both departments. Um, I do wanna highlight what this means for clients. Uh, Medicare is gonna be their primary insurance, and Medicaid will be their secondary insurance, so with this change, clients are gonna have to manage multiple physical insurance cards, um, and billing. Uh, basically, they'll send, bills will go through Medicare first and then through MA, so it's gonna be more paperwork, a little bit more confusion and complexity for the people that, um, will be left to kinda navigate this on their own. Um, there might be provider issues, uh, they'll only be able to go to providers that accept straight MA. Um, again, because there wouldn't be a care coordinator for these folks, they, the client, would need the, contact the provider to inquire if they're a straight MA provider or not. Um, obviously, losing the care coordinator, um, is gonna be a big, a big hit to them as they're accustomed to contacting their care coordinator for questions like this. Um, and then one of my biggest concerns with this is some of the folks are gonna lose access to transportation uh, for medical appointments. Um, their, their only option moving forward is gonna be what's called our MA access plan, which means, excuse me, they would need to drive themselves, or someone else, like a family, friend, or neighbor, would need to drive them, and then the driver's reimbursed mileage. Um, we do have an MA access plan that outlines the most cost-effective way for folks on MA to get to transportation. Um, however, essentially what that looks like is, is the client up-fronts the cost first and is reimbursed later. So some of the folks on these plans, if they're on fixed incomes, that's gonna be a pretty significant barrier to access their medical appointments due to transportation issues. Um, what we're doing to help in the meantime, our eligibility workers and case aides have already received a large number of calls for clients in our financial services department. Um, th- those, those clients that have already received notices from Ucare are contacting us. Uh, we kinda have a coordinated effort between our financial services and our SNBC coordinators now, um, as well as our staff are proactively reaching out to all of the impacted clients to explain their options, connecting them with the right plan, and making sure they continue receiving care, um, and medications that they need. With Ucare no longer offering this service, much of that administrative and client support that they were doing behind the scenes has really shifted back to our staff. There's no single entity now that's legally responsible for helping clients navigate this system once the change fully goes into effect, so our teams are kinda stepping in to fill that gap where we're able. So what I'm proposing to do, um, I'm gonna have to take my fingers out for this, I know pit committee saw this already. Um, with the reduction of fifteen to thirty percent, it really doesn't make sense to have this split department model anymore. We're gonna see approximately, could be up to two hundred and seventy-seven members drop, and having the full five FTEs to cover that caseload size just doesn't seem to make sense. So our proposition is to move the entire SNBC program under the umbrella of public health, remove it entirely from Social Services. Um, with that, we would drop from five FTEs that provide SNBC to four. Um, the two staff that are currently doing SNBC work in Social Services would be reassigned to other duties, um, and I wanted to lay out exactly what this looks like, so this graph that you can see in front of you, as of right now, today, snapshot in time, Social Services has a hundred and fifty FTEs. Two weeks ago, this board approved the Min Choices Transition Plan, in which four public health staff are transitioning over into Social Services, in which were budgeted positions in two thousand and twenty-six. In two thousand and twenty-six's budget, we also, I have a new disability case manager request, which would bring the total FTEs effective one-one-twenty-six to a hundred and fifty-five. With the, that, so that would be budgeted positions that would be added to Social Services. With this program realignment, uh, proposal, we would be dropping those two SNBC salaries and benefits to have a hundred and fifty-three FTEs effective one-one-twenty-six. Uh, that would be a cost savings of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars in salary and benefits. At the same time, the county overall goes from five SNBC coordinators to four. Okay, the dollars and cents of this, from the Social Services side of things, uh, the green bars represent the, uh, two, two SNBC staff, it was gener- uh, projected to generate about three hundred and seventy thousand in SNBC revenue. With this proposed change, which is represented by the white bars, uh, we are going to lose the three hundred and seventy thousand in revenue, but replace it with two hundred and thirty-four thousand. The potential positions that we'd be able to move the staff into would be able to generate revenue as well, approximately a hundred and eight thousand and a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So we don't just lose the revenue outright, we replace it with a different stream of revenue. Um, so there would be a loss of revenue with this change, however, when you factor in the hundred and eighty-one thousand in salary and benefit savings, we would actually have a positive Social Services net impact of forty-five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars for two thousand and twenty-six's Social Services-only budget. When it comes to Public Health, um, when I was actually able to get some of the information and revenue from Public Health, working with our fiscal teams, the, okay, sorry, I have to go back to my fingers now, the four Min Choices Assessment Positions that were coming over into Social Services that was approved by the board, Jessica, myself, and Suzie from Public Health have had many conversations about how would we implement this, what would this look like? We would take one of those Min Choices positions to become the fourth SNBC coordinator. So one of those people would not transition over one-one-twenty-six, they would stay within Public Health to assume that role of the fourth SNBC coordinator. That would leave an open position for one of our existing Social Services SNBC to apply for. The other position would be that newly created disability waiver case management position in two thousand and twenty-six's budget. So both of the Social Services staff that essentially would have the rug pulled out from underneath them would have an opportunity to apply for those two open positions.
So, an opportunity to apply, I...
We, we have...
Yes, I, 'cause I raised that question, and I, and even in your, um, presentation here, you say this two social ser- service positions will be reassigned into existing vacancies.
So we have to follow the union contract, whether it's those two positions exactly, or whether there's other internal interests within the bargaining unit that assume those positions, then the other two positions would be open, so.
The end result is, is the, is those two people will still be employed with Clay County.
Those two people will still remain within Social Services, wages, salary benefits would all be the same. There's, there's no guarantee as to what position they get because we have to follow the, uh, five-day internal posting per the union contract.
I, I think when they, when somebody hears that they have to reapply, it, it could assume then that they're, uh, you know, what if they don't get it, are they unemployed?
No, they're, they're, however this falls, there would be, I mean, I guess they could choose to not take whatever position would be open to them, but yes.
That's, that would be their choice.
Correct, yes. Um, so again, the Public Health side, when I was able to kinda view what the revenue and expenditures of Public Health looked like as well, this one position that we would recommend staying in Public Health to perform the fourth SNBC coordinator, that position in two thousand and twenty-six's budget was projected to bring in eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars worth of Min Choices revenue, that would be, with this proposal, replaced with SNBC revenue. Um, if everything stays on course, even with the potential reduction, because they get the higher reimbursement rate more than Social Services, um, it's projected that they will generate two hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars worth of revenue. generate $273,854 worth of revenue for a net positive impact to public health budget of $192,604. So to sum it all up, in the 2026 budget, we did have $370,000 of social services SNBC revenue. With this proposal, we'd be zeroing that out, but we'd be replacing it with $234,000 from this new revenue from these other revenue streams. And at the same time, eliminating the two SNBC salary and benefit expenditures of $181,310 for a net social services impact of $45,312 to the good. At the same time, public health gains approximately $192,000 in new net revenue from this SNBC realignment, resulting in an overall estimated levy savings of $237,916. All estimations, but it's based on the most current and accurate figures that we have as of right now. Any questions for me?
I want to come, this, you know, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this in our PIC meeting and, and obviously, you know, for both public health and social services to really grind this out and to see a savings for everybody, I think it's ultimately what we've been looking for, you know, in terms of our levy. So that's a great deal. But I, I do want to go back two minutes, if I can, to the no transportation issue. I, I raise some concern when I hear about that, when we talk about those people who need to make medical appointments and they don't have cash in their pocket to pay. And currently, there's, under the proposal, there would be a way where they'd pay it, but then they could be reimbursed.
Correct.
Right, so, and, and so my question to you back in PIC, and I'll ask it again now, is there a way that, through the county, that we can assist with that transportation with the, with the ability to get reimbursed rather than the client?
We would have to, we have two DHS-registered transportation providers in Clay County. We would have to explore contracting with them to provide that service for the folks that you're talking about, where the county would then pay them upfront, and then we would get reimbursed. We're, we're looking into that, certainly. Mikael and I were talking about that even before you brought it up at PIC, is, is that something that we should do? Absolutely. The issue with that is the timing component of it. Effective 7-126, the state is taking over all reimbursements for travel expenditures. We will keep like hotels, parking, and some of the meals, but the state is taking over the mileage and the transportation component of it.
Reimbursing.
The reimbursement part, correct. The, the functions of reimbursement, the administrative work behind the reimbursement-
Which scares me even more.
Little bit, yeah.
From, from the standpoint of the client.
Correct, because-
Because the client's going to have to somehow come up with money out of their pocket that they don't have to make this medical appointment.
Correct.
And then they're going to have to, more than likely, they're going to have to wait long, even longer to get a reimbursement because they have to go through state bureaucracy.
Right, so-
Lack of better-
Right, so, so we could explore a, a six-month contract effective 1-1 to June 30th with some of these transportation providers for that interim, but effective 7-126, that would no longer be a function of what we do at the county level.
We hear time and time again in all sorts of different areas about how significant transportation issues are in Clay County, and this is one of them. And to even make it even worse isn't a good option for us. So I, I would encourage between yourselves and public health or whatever, any way that we could incorporate, I mean, if it's going to be reimbursed, it's still going to be, it would be cost-neutral for Clay County, other than what you're talking about, maybe the staffing time.
Correct.
You know, and so I think if you can work that out, I would like to see some sort of a proposal that could come into place for, for us to help them in that regard.
Sure. I know, in my initial conversations with Mikaela, the staffing time was the primary focus. It was, can we absorb that additional administrative work? We have one case aide in our financial services division right now that does all of that reimbursement for the MA access. So any folks that are on straight MA right now, that's what she's doing all day, every day. So the idea would be, can, can we add that to her plate with what we think is coming from these 277 residents? I don't know that we have enough of that specific information yet to figure that out, but it is actively something that we're looking at.
Well, if you would work on that, it'd be great. Now, other than that, from a PIC standpoint, like I said, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this, and, and it was kind of a unanimous decision from PIC to support this request to make these changes.
Yeah, just a quick question, the potential people needing the transportation, I mean, is that a high, high percentage? Do you know, is it, is it a common thing in, uh, number, part two? Are there people throughout the whole county, or do they tend to be more toward Dilworth, Moorhead?
Oh, the population of the integrated SNBC members in Clay County, I would say, is spread throughout. Obviously, the majority would be located here in Moorhead. And I just want to share that the communication that has come from Ucare to the members has been difficult and confusing. I know when my, myself and my staff and Susie and her staff started getting copies of the letters that were being sent out to people, we questioned what it meant ourselves. It was pretty disheartening to see, I mean, these are adults with disabilities, a lot of them have guardians, you know, some of them have, have mental health, chemical dependency, physical disabilities, just a, a wide range of people that we work with and try to support. So today, I would like to encourage those folks of these 277 individuals who have received this letter, who know that they're losing their Medicare Connect, or, I'm sorry, Connect Plus Medicare, that's the name of the plan in, that Ucare offers that's being impacted. I'd like to encourage those members to contact their Clay County Care Coordinator for specific instructions on what they can do to either stay enrolled in the non-integrated Connect Plan. They can do that by contacting the Ucare Sales Office, and I actually have the phone number here, that's 612-676-3558. And that strictly is for their MA portion of the insurance that will be changing for them in 2026. And then for questions regarding the Medicare side, they should contact Aging Pathways, which was formerly known as Senior Linkage Line. The phone number for Aging Pathways is 1-800-333-2433. So, and they can also contact the Disability Hub, but really, they're going from having one health plan to two separate insurances, and we're going to try to do as much as we can to help them. One of the public health care coordinators assisted one of, or, yeah, assisted one of her members with calling Aging Pathways this week, and they sat on hold for two hours. The entire phone conversation took an hour. So for us to even think we're going to get 277 people through to these lines to, to get the answers that they need, it's a little unrealistic, but we can give them the instructions and help guide them on, on their best options going forward, so. And this is going on during Medicare's open enrollment, so it started October 15th. They need to select a new plan by December 7th. So, that's my-
And they've all been sent letters?
They've all received letters. Hopefully, they've opened them and are actively pursuing options. If they do nothing, if they don't respond to the letters or make these phone calls, they will automatically be enrolled in original Medicare and Fee for Service MA, and they will lose their care coordinator and the medical transportation provided through Ucare. And that's kind of the concerning part. Had they automatically been enrolled in the non-integrated plan, they would have kept their medical transportation through Ucare and their care coordinator, but that was not the way this change was designed by Ucare. So the person actively needs to pursue options to, to keep their, at least their SNBC product.
Do we have a way of knowing who has not? Of those 277, those have not responded with enrollment?
Um, we've been making calls to our members. The care coordinators are tracking who they can get ahold of, but-
I'm, I'm sure they're not always easy to get ahold of either.
No, no, you know, phone numbers change. You know, we've been having people come up to the office and we're, you know, trying to help guide them, but it's been a little complicated. And really, there was nothing we could even do until the 15th when open enrollment happened. So I just encourage people to contact their care coordinator, and they will guide you on your best steps forward.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Ebbinger.
Just off the top of my head, for the, for the public that may be involved in this, it doesn't help rural Clay County residents, but there is Senior Rides, I believe it's called, that provides transportation for seniors at a, at a modest amount. I don't know if it's reimbursable or not, but it is something that possibly they can pay out of their pocket. And it, it requires they make the arrangements. So if you have people that are really limited in their ability to, to, to function through these processes, it may not be useful. And again, I had Dancing Sky meeting yesterday, the area on aging, or agency, Area Agency on Aging, and one of the issues we've got in rural Minnesota, not just rural Clay County, is transportation for people. And, you know, consistently, that's, that's right up there. Food insecurity and transportation are two of the major concerns. So I appreciate the fact that you're, you're reaching out and you're trying to make this as manageable as possible, but it is a very profound issue we're going to be looking at for years as the numbers change on, on what we can do for our people. Having said that, this was accepted by PIC, and I would like to make a motion to approve the transition of the SNBC program fully under public health oversight effective January 1, 2026.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Motion carried. All right, thank you, thank you, Jessica. Glenn, you got one more thing here.
I do. Let's see, we got a federal shutdown letter.
Here unfortunately with more not great news, but it's super important that we get the word out for the community. I'd like to spend the next few minutes talking about the impacts of the federal shutdown for residents here in Clay County. The current federal government shutdown has resulted in the suspension of certain appropriations, including key funding that supports the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, or food assistance, a lot of people call it different things. On October 10th, the US Department of Agriculture notified states that if the shutdown continues into November, there will not be enough federal funds available to pay out November SNAP benefits. USDA then directed all states to hold November issuance files, meaning they cannot transmit benefits to the EBT vendors who load those dollars onto participants' cards. It's important to note, this is not an optional step for states or for counties. Once that directive is issued, the system is effectively locked from processing new benefits until Congress restores funding. So this is not a state decision or a county decision, it's really a federal stoppage that flows downward, and the USDA's guidance has triggered a series of state-level system changes that I'll talk about here next. Really, at the state level, in response to USDA's directive, the Department of Children, Youth, and Families, or DCYF, implemented several statewide system changes that directly impact how counties operate our SNAP and our MFIT programs. So MFIT is Minnesota Family Investment Program, otherwise known as Cash Assistance, but there's cash and food that are a component of that program. DCYF programmed our state's eligibility system, MAXIS, which I'm sure you've heard a lot about, it's that wonderful outdated technology system. DCYF programmed that system to automatically block approvals for both SNAP and MFIT cases once the federal shutdown extends into November. While applications are still being accepted and processed, county staff will be unable to finalize or approve those applications until federal funds are released. Again, because MFIT combines both federal and state funds for food and cash assistance together, the entire program has to be paused, as there's no way to separate the federal portion from the state portion. DCYF is managing statewide communication. Today, they're going to begin notifying all SNAP and MFIT households via text and email to explain that November benefits will not be issued while the shutdown continues. This is really a, a system-wide safeguard to prevent counties from issuing benefits that cannot be federally reimbursed. It ensures consistency and it protects the state and counties from potential over issuance errors. I think it's also important to note that right now, with the big beautiful bill impacts that I, I brought to your attention a few months ago, the SNAP error rate is definitely a point of contention right now for how potential over issuances would impact the SNAP error rates. SNAP error rates right now are being assessed for how those potential penalties to states and counties will be implemented when the big beautiful bill provisions go into place. I know NACO at the national level is trying to get some sort of advocacy to carve out this specific timeframe in how SNAP is being issued and having those not count against state's error rates moving forward. Kind of when these changes take effect, so we were initially told that October 15th, no new impending applications can be approved. They then extended that to October 16th. However, then on October 17th, they said new impending applications for SNAP can be approved through the end of October. So we, we can at least do that until 10/31. Today, DCYF is sending that public notice, saying that November benefits will not be issued if the federal shutdown continues. On October 29th, that same block will extend to the MFIT cases, preventing any active or pending MFIT approvals from being processed. And then beginning November 1st, the system will block all reinstatements or active cases, essentially freezing all new benefit activity until Congress acts. It's very important to note that applications are still being accepted and entered. Even during the pause, our staff are continuing to process every application, so once federal funding resumes, we can immediately approve those pending cases and minimize delays. So while the system is blocking the approvals, it is not stopping people from coming to our office and applying. We're just keeping the pipeline ready to move once the shutdown ends. This slide, I, I wanted to highlight this for the community as well. This slide really breaks down which public assistance programs are directly impacted by the federal shutdown and which ones continue to operate as normal. So SNAP, which is food assistance, and MFIT, which is food and cash assistance, those are the ones that are being temporarily blocked, but we do have several programs that are continuing normally. We, we administer and operate the DWP Cash, General Assistance, Minnesota Supplemental Aid, Housing Support, and Regular Medical Assistance. Just wanted residents to know which programs are still available, so they continue, continue receiving the help that they need during this period if they're eligible for those Wanted to speak to the local and human impact as well. Here in Clay County, about 3,400 households receive SNAP benefits. That represents over 7,700 individuals, children included, roughly one in every eight residents. An additional 326 households receive MFIT, which combines both food and cash assistance for families with children. Together, SNAP and MFIT bring over $1.1 million per month into Clay County's economy through grocery stores, local retailers, and essential household purchases. When that flow stops, the impact is not only felt by the families, but also by local businesses that depend on those dollars circulating through the economy. While the numbers are significant, I feel the real story is kind of about the people that's behind them. Families may suddenly find themselves without resources they count on for groceries, baby formula, or everyday essentials. If the shutdown does continue and November benefits are not issued, we're going to have thousands of Clay County residents that might struggle to afford food. We can expect to see an increased demand at our local food shelves like Dorothy Day, a place for hope and reach out in Holly. These organizations do wonderful work, but they rely heavily on donations and volunteer capacity. A large sudden increase in need would put added pressure on their ability to serve everyone who walks through their door. It's important to emphasize that Clay County Social Services, along with our community partners, are doing everything we can to prepare and respond for this. We're continuing to process these applications, we're communicating with residents, trying to coordinate local resources so that hopefully nobody falls through the cracks. To break that down, how we're responding, so even though SNAP and MFIT approvals are blocked at the state level, again, our staff continue to process all incoming applications. blocked at the state level, again, our staff continue to process all incoming applications. Everything's being entered into the system, so that the second federal funding resumes, those cases can be approved immediately without any delay. We're maintaining tracking of pending applications and active cases that are impacted by the pause, so we kind of have an accurate count of how many households are going to need benefits the moment that the system reopens. Again, residents, please continue to reach out to us, apply for help. Know that your information is in line to move forward once the federal government reauthorizes it. Our second focus is on communication. We've rolled out consistent messaging across multiple platforms. We've got lobbies, lobby signage, kind of phone scripts for consistent messaging, social media posts, county website, just to make sure residents are getting the same information, and that it's accurate information, no matter how they contact us. We've also been working with our GIS and Communications Department to push updates through our Facebook page, local media emphasizing again that applications are still being accepted. The third piece is really the coordination. We're working closely with our local food shelves, as well as other community organizations and partners. These partnerships help us anticipate where the need is going to increase the most, and ensure families know where they can go for emergency food and basic supports if the federal shutdown extends into November. Really wanted to put this out there as well for the public. This slide focuses on what's important for residents right now, where they can turn to for food and immediate support if we do see that November benefits are delayed. We want residents to know that they're not alone, and Clay County is coordinating with every available partner to ensure access to food and essential supports. We are encouraging residents to contact these agencies in advance before visiting, just to confirm hours of operation and specific intake requirements. A lot of these places are volunteer-run, so hours of operation and, and kind of staffing patterns really vary depending on volunteer availability, their donation supply, community demand. So a quick phone call or website check will help residents ensure they don't make an unnecessary trip to one of these places, and that each agency can plan appropriately for incoming visitors. Really the most important step is for residents to stay informed using reliable official sources. DCYF's website is being updated regularly with statewide guidance. We're posting information on our Social Services Facebook page and the county website, so people can quickly find accurate and local information. Residents who wish to share how the shutdown is affecting them can contact our federal delegation, Senator Amy Klobuchar, Senator Tina Smith, or Congresswoman Michelle Fishbox's office. Our message to residents is simply, your stories matter. It's important that the federal decision-makers hear from those directly impacted by these funding interruptions. We're also encouraging residents to look out for one another right now. A simple check-in with a neighbor, or offer to carpool to a food shelf, or a small food donation can really go a long way. For those in a position to help, local food pantries are always accepting donations of food, funds, or volunteer time. Even modest contributions will make a big difference if November brings the shutdown further. In the weeks ahead, we'll continue to monitor state and federal communications every day. We'll share updates with this board and the public, and we'll continue to coordinate closely with our community partners. But our focus remains the same, to provide stability, compassion, and accurate information to the people that we serve. I know that was a lot of information for you to process, but do you have any questions for me at this time?
Questions? And we're looking for a motion to approve the attached letter.
All right, yes.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Did draft a letter, kind of urging this board to, for the federal delegation to kind of support the idea that we get a resolution to this matter one way or another. The draft of that letter is attached. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. I am looking for a motion to approve that letter if this board chooses to.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached letters to support the, of support to the Minnesota Congressional delegation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Evernig, a second by Commissioner Krabnoff. Any further discussion? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the information and the presentation today. I really want to applaud your department for trying to be as upfront and clear to the public about how services could be interrupted, or paused, or however we want to phrase it during this time. So I really appreciate that. And I, I do think it's important for folks to know that this board is not taking a political stance in regards to parties and how you resolve it. But to share the story, which we constantly talk about, is how this effective affects our community. And obviously, the government shutdown affects more than just SNAP pieces, but this is today what we're really seeing, and how those challenge, those present challenges to our community. I would really encourage the media also watching to be as forthcoming to go right to staff in the counties in which staff is working, to be as clear and have the most accurate, up-to-date information as possible before presenting that out to the public. Because I was just at a meeting with the Association of Minnesota Counties on Thursday, and there was even a change from Thursday to Friday in how, what we're seeing, how that changes, et cetera. But I think this letter is important to share to our leaders. And as someone who has experienced food insecurity in my life, that was a really scary time. And I think it's, we would be remiss to not underscore how scary some of these situations are for people, particularly going into a colder time of the year. So hopeful that Washington, D.C. can find some resolution soon.
All right. Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. I just want to make a comment here. I, this, obviously, these programs that are being put on hold are, are federal and state programs that basically are mandated down to the counties to do. And I find it amazing that when the federal or state has problems, they can stop mandates. But counties really don't have options to stop mandates. I just, I find that ironic, that we as counties are always arguing about state and federal government putting mandates on us, and we have no options. But they can't get along in Washington, D.C., and so all mandates stop. Yes. Just a point.
I agree. That is rather ironic.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Quinn. Thank you. All right. Next, we have, we have Rory and Jocelyn here on the pen testing. We've talked about this a few times.
We have, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners. So today, the last time we spoke about this IT penetration testing, Jocelyn and I did meet again and review the proposals, and spoke with a couple of our, our top two vendors that we were looking at. And the one we would like to go with is Clifton, Clifton Larson Allen, and we're requesting an amount of $25,000 a year over a five-year contract. And the proposal that you should have seen in your board-only packet there was about $16,500 for the testing and vulnerability assessment, along with a $1,200 onsite expense, travel time and lodging, and another $4,500 for time and materials. That $1,200 and $4,500 amounts, those are varying costs. So depending on, you know, how much travel is, so it might go, might go up, might go down, hard, hard to say. And then the, the retest at $4,500. So that would be after our assessment and testing is done. You know, after 60, 90 days, they'd come back after we've had time to remediate any, any issues that have been found. Then that amount is kind of a rough estimate of what it might cost to help us retest, and just depends on how many findings there are. So we, we would probably expect that amount to be a little bit higher, but that's, that's why the, the total request is $25,000. Those added up together are $22,220. But we're asking for just a little bit more each year to, especially on this first year, and then offset the cost, you know, the six to seven percent growth or cost adjustment that's going to be every year going forward to, on the annual basis from that vendor.
Rory, I didn't read through the technicalities of the contract itself. It's a five-year contract, and, and just the way things redevelop and, and, and the grand scheme of technology and how rapidly it moves. Do we have an out on a five-year contract? Maybe?
We can, I mean, we can sure add some sort of out if there's a, you know, mutual agreement. That's something we can definitely, you know, have Mr. Melton and his team take a look at as well.
I think five years is a long time to, you know, you know, who knows what might be available to us at maybe reduced rates than what this is. We don't know.
Sure.
You know, so I just think that it might be in our best interest to at least have an option to know what it would cost us to leave early.
Gotcha. Okay. Are you suggesting that maybe we do a three-year, or?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we should at least have an opportunity to, for example, I don't think you should, I think you should always monitor what, what we're doing here. And at some point in time, maybe through that monitoring, you find out there's better options for us, and we don't need to wait five years to do them. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I saw it.
Sure.
And, but if, if there's no opt-out clause, typically when we enter into a five-year contract of some sort with, with an entity, we have, we have the ability to leave early if we're not satisfied. And that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can look into that and, you know, kind of differ on the recommendation of Mr. Melton and his team.
So with that, all right, from a timing standpoint, Rory, how soon do you need to accept this?
We, I mean, we, we have some time yet.
Can we, so could we, could we not act on this today? And, because, because we'd be acting on the contract, right?
Sure. Yep. Yep, we can, yeah.
From my standpoint, I would, I'd prefer at least to review language. I don't know if there's others who have, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would be willing to approve this today contingent on our attorney's office adding either a 30-day out, or, you know, some sort of parting language. You know, I, I don't think we're arguing over moving forward with CLA. I think that makes sense. And I think it's a minor piece that certainly Mr. Melton could.
I think certainly we can remove, or we review it and, and get it back to the board even by, I would think, or, or if you had a contingent. I think the only other contingency you might be in there is presenting it back to the company. I mean, they may have something that if they're approving it for that period of time at that price, it might be based on them knowing that that's guaranteed for that time period. So they may have their own thoughts.
Well, typically, an opt-out clause has a price to it. Right? So at least it gives, lets us know, if we're going to leave in three years instead of five, you know, what's that, and then we'd have to incorporate that cost into what other alternative we'd be looking at.
But I think if the board wanted to, you could approve it with the contingent having it in there. And then if there's no problem, and they are fully accepting of it, then it would be completely done. If they didn't want that in there somehow, or had some other things, I think then Rory could bring it back to the board.
No, I don't think we do.
No. Yeah. Okay, yes.
Rory, so this is for external checking?
Internal, yep.
So if we want to add externally next year or the other year, this company also has that?
They do, yes. They, they have quite a few add-on services as well. We're, we're focusing just on the one, one component that, yep.
The more you add on, the cheaper it gets.
Well, maybe. Yeah, hard to say. Yeah. I guess, yeah. It depends on what you want to commit to that one company. And, you know, if you want all their services, I'm sure they'll cut you a better deal.
I mean, I believe we, this is definitely, I think, I approve it with our attorney's authority.
All right. So the motion? I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract subject to our county attorneys working on language to clarify early withdrawal of the contract. Does that sound right?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, Commissioner Baer.
I appreciate Rory taking a deep dive into this.
Sure. Yeah, nope. But, I mean, it helps. I mean, this, this type of thing affects the entire county. It's, sometimes it's more than just an IT decision, so it's, it's great to have input from, input and the support of the, the board. So, yeah, appreciate the, the questions and the, the checking, and it's, it's good to review this.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Great. All right. Thank you. Next, Rory, you got, let's see, camera licensing and maintenance.
Yeah, yep. So in our 2026 budget request, we, we're transferring the software and maintenance support for our security camera system from GIS and Communication over to Technology Services. So in that, in that request was $11,500 a year transferred from Mark's office over to ours. And we just received a renewal for that here just in September, and the amount was closer to $16,000, as you can see, $15,798.38. So, and how that was missed was because of our two newest buildings, our new withdrawal management detox facility and DMV buildings with the roughly 90 cameras that we had included in the project over there. So that was paid out of the project funds. So now, this is the first year we're seeing those renewals for that software and maintenance contract. So those were, those were just maybe not, not thought about at, you know, in May-June when we were doing our budget planning. So the request today would be to, to add, add some funds here, oh, was it 60, trying to add $6,500 extra to help cover that cost, plus cost of extra cameras that'll be happening here this next year, and likely another video server as well. And the, as far as the cost impact or funding source, with that approval of the, the previous agenda item for the penetration testing, the original amount was $40,000. With that approval of $25,000, you know, I think, I believe, if maybe Administrator Larson can correct me on this, but I believe that $40,000 was already kind of factored into the overall plan for 2026. So if, if anything, maybe that can, that $6,500 could maybe get, come out of that $15,000 that was available, and then maybe that remaining could be cut from the 2026 budget out of Technology Services. That'd be one option anyway that I presented.
That sounds like a good option, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Wouldn't come out of anywhere extra. It would just be a little, little less that we'd save for next year.
Yeah. So I'll make, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the $6,500 from, yeah, unallocated 2026 Technology Service, Professional Services Funds for Equipment Repair and Maintenance of Camera Licensing and Maintenance, which is already created in 2026 budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Krabnoff, second by Commissioner Evernig. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify that's what.
I, I want to, I just want, I want to clarify from Steve. Do we need this as a motion if it's already built in? I mean, his budget's already built in with this extra money?
I think we've, you've got, as a board, you guys have made recommendations, and so I think that this will be fine.
I think this is an unexpected expense, but it's being offset by a reduced amount of need for an item that had been approved. So I think it's. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. And we have a request, purchase a new electronic storage appliance for criminal justice staff.
Yeah, thank you. So last item here would be another electronic storage appliance. And we've had a couple here in the last year. This one would be specific for our criminal justice use. So attorneys, law enforcement, correctional facility, and going forward also for the juvenile detention center as well. Some of that data being stored all on one system. So a lot of this comes from Minnesota BCA requiring, you know, kind of separation of criminal justice data and non-criminal justice data. They don't like the co-mingle data, which, which I can understand. So we've been working hard the last few years to essentially separate off as much as we can from the rest of the county departments to these criminal justice departments. So this would be a, an appliance to replace the aging hardware that we have now. The renewal we've received for that is closer to $8,000 just for one year of maintenance and support, which is a legacy system through HPE. And that's, includes a 60% price hike just to try to get you off of their legacy system and onto a new one. And we did include that in one of our quotes here as well, just to show you the, the cost difference of what that would be versus what we're looking at going with. So we did get three quotes, or competing quotes here, all through a state contract through Omni Partners. But the quotes for that replacement system that HPE wants us to go with, it comes in at 138,597.40. The next quote would be the same appliance that we're looking to purchase, which is a peer storage system at 124,610.39. And the last quote for that same peer storage through SHI, 95,055. So if, if approved, we'd like to proceed with the lowest cost option of 95,055. And originally on, when I submitted the agenda item here, the funding source, I had put 59,055 to the tech services budget and then the remaining 36,000 to internal services. But after reviewing internal services, we do have 83,906.7 set aside for this replacement appliance. So I'd like to use that full amount just to clear out that internal services item. And then out of my 2025 budget item, I'd like to also spend the, the difference of 11,148.93.
All right. So this would all be handled through your 2025 budget.
Correct. Yep.
Between internal service fund and maximizing the internal service fund and then the balance from your tech services budget.
Yep. Correct.
Any questions? Commissioner Ebberinger.
Chair, I move that we approve the purchase of a new electronic storage appliance from SHI for 95,055.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ebberinger, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same sign? Motion carried. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Larson?
I did look, I did look through the contract and I'm sure Brian will, will look at it a little bit closer. But they do have a termination clause in the, for the pen testing. It says there's a minimum requirement of 12-month commitment from the date services began. If a client cancels the statement of work for any reason in months one through 12, then the client agrees to pay for the cost of a one-year commitment. If the client cancels the statement of work in any month following the 12th month, then the client agrees to pay 20% of a one-year fee as a termination fee.
Very good.
Very good.
That answers everything right there. I, I told you I didn't read it. So I just wanted to be aware of it. So, thank you for that, Darren. All right. We do for a quick break again. All right. Five minutes again. Item that we have is request approval to adjust Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber of Commerce 2026 funding request. And we'll start with Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, last week, we had a discussion at the preliminary levy back in September. We set the FM Chamber of Funding at $85,000. There was some additional discussion about what was paid for last, last year, and which was 100,000, $100,000. The board had a discussion that the intent was not to decrease their funding. And so the request was that we brought this, would bring this back today for additional discussion and action.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll start with the kind of, I, I do, when we had the conversation about what was the 185,000 and how we would change the distribution of that, it was certainly my understanding and my intent to fully fund the chamber at its previous amount. So I think there was just a, an error in how that was presented. I think there was presented in reverse of what it was actually supposed to be. And, you know, I think the chamber, you know, we've got, we've got many millions of dollars that are on the line in St. Paul and they've been right there helping us. And so I certainly, I, I think from the intent standpoint and my vote was that it just not be reduced, but it would maintain its, it's like, I think most of our other outside entities, you know, we didn't necessarily grant increases, but at least in most instances, we maintained them at current levels.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, right?
I certainly agree with everything you just said. I mean, I think it was pretty clear that day. So I, I would fully support the amount being increased by 15 to that 100,000. So I'll, I'll make a motion for that, motion to adjust Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber of Commerce 2026 funding request.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Kravina, second by Commissioner Ebberinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? That motion carried. All right. Then we move into our standing item with the, regarding the 2026 budget discussion. Steve, do you want to talk to us a little bit? Have you incorporated, for example, the action that we took today regarding social services and public health? I think there was 200 and some thousand dollars there. And I think some other minor things have come up. Do you want to give us?
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did, did take those two items that, that you just highlighted. We will have to go back with Rory's piece and make, make that adjustment to the final budget. But with the, with the two significant changes that were made today by the board, we, we are now at a 4.92% from a levy perspective. And so we did, did see roughly, roughly about, just about a quarter of a percent decrease.
And that 4.92 is net?
That's correct. Net. Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Okay. I have a question just in regards to where we're at with union negotiations piece. That's just such a, a large outlier. I don't know how else to pitch it.
That's true. We've had, a lot of them, we've had the third negotiations already. I'm going to be bringing a summary of everything to the board next Tuesday, the 28th, and then kind of get your additional guidance on where we go from there. I think we're making some progress. I don't know if we're making as much progress as I would like to have made. But at least when I bring it back to you on the 28th, I will have where we are in the negotiation process. And I'll have, what they, what they do is they give us our, their proposals on the first negotiations. We give them ours on the second. And then they counter, counter proposals on the third negotiation. So we have a pretty good idea of where everybody is going to be. What I'll need from you next week during a closed session is kind of where we are going to draw the line on some of that stuff. So I don't, I don't have a great answer for you as far as budget and cost-wise. But, and then, and then right after our, our board meeting next week, I'm meeting with several of the unions again to kind of hopefully solidify some of that.
Okay.
Based on the, on the board's wishes.
All right. Yes. Commissioner Ebberinger.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I, I would like to discuss the request from Lake Agassy Library. When we met, oh, probably a month ago, the discussion was that we were going to decline half of the 30,110 increase they requested under 226 ask of 300,690. We had a meeting on the executive board here last week. And at the behest of Becker County, we took a hard look at the funding formula and how the, the signatories' requests are formulated. And it has, it has some strange, it was developed 30 years ago. It's having some strange effects on Becker County, on their, their necessity they pay for their geographical members, which is what this is based on. And the fact that about 40% of the people who patronize the Detroit Lakes Library are actually being paid for by Becker County. Long story short, we had a discussion where Becker County said that they, they will live with the formula this year, but they want it to be revisited next year. In talking to the executive director after that, it became apparent that those entities that don't pay the request ask, there has to be some cutback in hours. The budget that was proposed is not so rich as to have any, any wiggle room for that. I asked for some specific numbers. And one of the issues was reserves. Right now, the reserves with the 2,136,840. By the end of the year, it should be down to just north of $2 million. The, the 2026 budget, I asked, do we have a deficit on that? And the response was, if the funding from states and federal remain what we anticipate, and that's based on this year, there'll be a 152,579 deficit. If the, and frankly, the funding that's coming from the state and the federal is probably not going to be close to what we base on it in this year's figures. So they're already into deficit spending. And again, with the, at that point, the reserves will be 2 million and change. The end of 2026, the reserves should be down to 1,884,254 if the fund, the other funding remains steady, which, as I said, is questionable. That figures 43% of their annual expenses. I'm saying all this to, to let the commission know, the request is not unreasonable based on the funding available to Lake Agassy. And also, I don't find it unreasonable, but I find it concerning that if they have to make up for the additional 15,000 and change, it'll have to come out of the hours of our rural Clay County libraries. I think they serve a purpose. I think they're important to the communities they serve in Ulin, Holly and Barnesville and the surrounding areas. And I would like us to, to provide the funding to keep them operating at the level they're doing now. So that would be approving the entire ask, it was, as was originally submitted by Lake Agassy.
Okay. Dave, can I, a couple of questions. So you mentioned if the, if their reserves was brought down to 1,884,254, that would equate to 53%?
43.
43?
43%.
What is their annual budget?
I don't have that in front of me. But I got this from Jamie, who's the, the accounting guru they have. But looking at that, looks like it'd be just short of 4 million.
And then when we talk about, I, I, and again, I don't know, I don't know how, what are the hours of rural libraries now? What?
I don't know when opening and close is, but Barnesville is open 36 hours a week. Holly is 32 hours a week. Ulin is six hours a week. And Moorhead is 64 hours a week.
And so the proposal would be that the rural libraries?
Moorhead is a separate signatory.
Okay.
So they, they get billed. We are the second highest. Becker County is the highest. I think Moorhead's third. We're, we're third and they're second in the pecking order. But as far as the amount of the billing.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ebberinger, the 2026 proposed budget next year is 4,404,172, which has an increase of 212,984 over last year.
And their total ask for us was 30,000 and we're giving them half?
No, the total ask.
No, but increase.
Oh, the increase.
30,110.
Yeah.
Can I clarify? So we voted to fund half of the increase?
Yes. Wasn't it like 5%?
5%.
You know, I, Commissioner Ebberinger called me yesterday to kind of talk about this. I, I would, and, you know, like to hear, I've followed the Becker County conversation throughout the media. It's been in the paper a lot. Want to make sure that there is action on that. I mean, I don't believe they've had full action, board action on the allocation yet. Is that understood?
It was not, but their representative spoke to us, said he was satisfied with the response. Number one, they, and it, it does sort of defy logic, that they're the biggest, highest paying signatory in the, in the organization, but they only have three rural satellite locations. But 80% of the bill that, that we receive is based on the geographical residence of the cardholders. If I have, take my Moorhead Library card and I go to Holly, I can check out a book a week and it's not going to reflect in Holly's bill because I'm a Moorhead resident. If somebody from Becker County goes into Detroit Lakes once a week, and they've got a fantastic library in Detroit Lakes, and they go in there and basically all of their business is done, this, this Becker County resident with Detroit Lakes, then Becker County is still carrying the, the burden on that. That is something we're going to have to sit down and reformulate because 30 years ago, it seemed to make sense when they passed this as how they were going to do the, the billing. Now I think although residence of the cardholder has some bearing, I don't know if it's worth 80%. I think maybe the costs of running the library should be factored in there. So we, we will see. But at this point, I feel it's a legitimate ask, simply going in there and asking for the detailed numbers. There's a real need there. And they've cut it close enough to where there's not a lot of wiggle room if we want to keep our hours. And they would have to take the difference out of the hours of the, of our rural libraries, which some of them are thin enough as it is. I, I would not want to see that.
And so Commissioner Ebberinger, you, you talked to, you gave us the number. So the current. the current reserves, uh, is that $2,136,840? Is that, is that the anticipated reserves at the end of 2025?
No, it'll be $2,036,000.
At the end of 20?
At the end of 2025.
Okay. Um, and then, and then when you said that, at the end of 2026, those reserves could drop to $1,884?
Two fifty-four.
Two fifty-four. And, and that, that is as a result of just currently deficit?
Yeah, they're, they're looking at a deficit of $152,579.
Is that, is that deficit, um, due to spending, or are they anticipating reduced revenue from the state?
That deficit is based on their best guess for revenues from state and federal sources, which right now, you know, I think is shaky, as we all do. But that would be if they get in, basically equivalent to what they've gotten in this The, uh, one of, two of the big impacts that have happened in last year is they had, they had employees who were making less than fast food restaurant wages. We had negotiation, and they got a raise to bring wages up to modest levels, but it was certainly an improvement over what they had. Basically what we've had to do. And the other aspect is the lease on the new library space, office space, in the new Morehead Library is considerably more than what, what it was in the old location. And although it's been planned for, and it's hopefully gonna be a relationship that goes on and is, is good for both parties, it is, it does have an impact on Lake Agassiz.
And what was that annual increase cost for that rental?
I don't remember the total, it was eighteen dollars a square foot.
What was the increase per, for a square foot? Was it eleven, and we're up to eighteen, or what?
Uh, well, the, they're, they're getting about two-thirds of the square footage they had in the old library.
I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is how much of our 30,000 increases related to, uh, the rental increase on the new, new building?
I would say ballpark, less than, uh, the increase being for the salaries.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, but I'm sure probably 10,000 of it. And that's just me taking a, a, a shot in the dark.
Mr. Krabina.
Yeah, well, I, I guess, to me, and I don't wanna make light of any money, but I don't wanna make light of this organization. I think Laurel is extremely important to our county, and it's important to our region, and for this, you know, I know it's something, but, uh, for this small amount, I, I don't, it has to be sustainable, and we have to help them with that. So I'd be in favor of, um, going back to their original, uh, request. We're finding savings, we've knocked our numbers down, we're probably knocking down some more, and we don't know about the union, I get it, but I don't think we need to be knocking Laurel down where they can't operate the way should, uh, they should be.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. You know, I, I agree with the sentiments on all the conversation points, I just don't want to preemptively make an action before the other partners have officially done it either. Um, you know, I, I get that, that one commissioner can say something, but sometimes I just worry about, I mean, I, you gotta sell it too, and so there's that piece, and, um, the nice thing is we have time, we have, um, you know, we have time to kind of work these things out. You know, I'm cautious on the increases, just not knowing what the union piece is. I mean, that's a big thing, but I, you know, I do appreciate that you brought this back up, and I think we have time to kind of work through what pieces are. Um, you know, we just heard two superintendents talking about mass layoffs for educators if, if they don't get their piece too. So I mean, we're all in these really challenging times to figure out, you know, how we utilize tax dollars.
What are we, so are, is it unclear what Becker's position is right now? Is that, is that what we're saying?
I was left with the impression that we were gonna move forward, and I don't know if the, the commissioner that's on the board had the authority, or the blessing, or what, but he said, okay, I'm satisfied with their explanation, we, uh, we just need to work on changing this formula over the next year, which I think is a valid observation on his point, but.
And I did reach out to that commissioner yesterday, just to have conversations, and he said, I, while I see, I see it, and I, we need to redo the formula, which we talked about, he goes, I still have to sell it to my board, and I don't want to preemptively commit a hundred percent until I get them to sign a hundred percent, that's.
Have all, what other counties are part of this? Monoman, Norman County?
Monoman, Monoman City, Norman, Polk.
Wilkin.
Wilkin.
Clearwater.
Yep.
Do we know if they've all agreed to their increase?
I was told nobody has notified her that they're not paying. Wilken County was in the executive board, and he said, sure. He said, yes, well, we've already approved it. I know the concern was, and it may just be reflective of the larger signatories, but the concern was Becker. Morehead was pretty much in a position where they couldn't. I mean, they're getting paid rent, so I, I think their, their meeting a full ask is a.
What was, what was their increase, you know, Morehead?
Um, Morehead's request was $908,300.
Compared to what the previous year?
Uh, compared to $837,210.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I guess, you know, in terms of the discussion about importance of it, I, you know, I, um, again, it's an external agency, and, um, I, I think, I think finding out what Becker County is gonna ultimately do is, is important. We are increasing five percent as it stands right now, and down the road, once we know more about Becker County, I wouldn't be opposed to, to relooking at, at the additional $15,000. But I mean, if, what if another county who is even higher up than us doesn't do their?
I don't think there is.
It doesn't matter even if they're higher up than us, it's just another county. Yeah, but I, but I mean, if, if they're not gonna, if they don't take that increase, Becker County's increase, then is everybody else gonna ask to take more, or are, are there gonna be?
I think they're gonna cut Becker County's.
Start cutting hours?
Services.
Okay, that, that would ref.
That's, that was her comment, and, and, uh, it was not made in, in any kind of
Oh, they.
anger, she just said, if, if a county doesn't pay, that's where the, the cuts need to take place.
Why don't we find out what those cuts would be, potentially?
Yeah, I think.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, just to provide some additional context, I think in just looking at the board, in the budget that they presented, there's a, a $200, $212,982, eighty-four dollar increase request. Um, the, the personnel that Commissioner Ebberger commented on earlier was a six percent increase, which was 182,750,000 of that request. Uh, they also, uh, Mr. Chair, you asked about revenues, uh, they, they are receiving, are anticipating receiving $70,572 less in state basic support, uh, as to what they received in, in 2025.
I think if you find out what are the potential cuts that we'd be looking at, then we can have a better idea on what to go forward with. I, you know, I don't, I don't wanna ignore this, uh, second request on behalf of Commissioner Ebberger and, and the library, but I, you know, I think we, I think we have some time to, you know, and, and obviously down the road, if, if, um, you know, understanding more what Becker County is, I, you know, I can certainly still support this going forward, but I, um, and that's a decent, we have this on, we have, this is precisely why I asked that this be a standing.
I agree.
Item on our agenda, so that we can continue these, this dialogue.
Mm-hmm.
And not wait from now until, um, the need to set the final levy in December. So, um, you know, I think, you know, I think, as far as I'm concerned, Commissioner Ebberger, you can go back to them, tell them that, that the board just is looking for more information, um, better understand.
I'll get some of the.
Better understand what other counties are doing, and.
I'll get some of the answers to the questions that come up here.
Perfect.
And we can revisit it.
So if there was no change to what the, um, current, um, amount that, anything that, that the library board have to do, they wouldn't have to do it until 2026 anyway? Right, so?
You know, and, and in all fairness, and I think we're demonstrating it today, if people start lowballing these and not paying the ask, it, it takes, it takes one, and other people say, look what Clay County did, just like we're saying, where's Becker County? Uh, it's a reasonable thing, but I think that's probably, uh, a concern.
Any, anytime you have a, like a partnership, and a particular entity wants to change what has been the financial structure of that partnership, it sometime, it sometimes reflects more than just that one partner. It, you know, it has consequences to all remaining parties, and I, I think, I think that's kind of where Commissioner Mojo was going too on it, I think, but. Anyway, I don't, you know, I, as far as I'm concerned, let's just get some more information, and I, I certainly will not be opposed to, um, further, further discussion and consideration on the request. I mean, it's up to you guys, what you, if you wanna act on it today, it's your choice, but.
Hello?
Okay. All right, do we have anything else? Steve, on budget stuff, you, can you find any, have you found any more yet since we started this conversation?
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Darren, you got any, huh? You find any cuts for us that we? Okay. All right. All right, let's move into committee reports. Commissioner Krabina, do you wanna start today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, to go back to last Wednesday, the fifteenth, and the Historical and Cultural Society Finance Committee, we reviewed our monthly reports and, um, went through the final details of proposed annual budget. Uh, obviously, going back to our piece, um, there was no increase on their request. Um, that'll come before the full board, uh, on Wednesday. On the sixteenth, I had a, the monthly meeting for HRA, um, we had a healthy meeting, uh, overall, uh, overview of projects, updates, um, uh, for right now, their, uh, revenues are improving. Uh, they, uh, went through a period of higher inversions for a while, they've, uh, made their repairs to these properties, and now they're starting to bring revenue, so, uh, much like last year, it's continuing this year to be a steady improvement, uh, forward on their returns. Um, they did do their, went through their annual plan, along with that, their annual budget, and, uh, once again, thankful for their, pardon if I have any, their, their levy that we, we all talked about. So that, it was mainly a high overview of, uh, meeting of going signs for next year. Um, excuse me. Uh, in the afternoon on the sixteenth, we had our Public Health Director interview that took place, that was part of that. Uh, and then also, um, we, I had the Historical and Cultural Society Retreat, we do that annually. We talk about future visits, exhibits, not only for the coming year, but many of these exhibits, um, can be, uh, two years out, something like that, trying to find out when they come to our area. Uh, also, one thing that did come up that sparked a little thought was about the museum space that we have down there at the EMCON. Uh, after the Morehead development gets all done, and Morehead starts, City of Morehead starts moving back into their, uh, future location back, uh, within, you know, City Hall, uh, that's gonna be opening up some space. So, um, they're just beginning talks with the, uh, City of Morehead, what that, uh, that might look like, uh, in, in how the museum fits, fits within the EMCON, uh, center. Uh, Friday, I had, um, two meetings regarding the PRTF and the non-secured facility. First was with our small group with Rep. Keeler, um, and, uh, kind, mainly just talked about, um, other opportunities that may be coming through, uh, maybe, I didn't mention it last week perhaps, but, uh, engagement was, um, Senator Chauvin, about maybe, uh, some federal input, and then also, uh, just through last week discussions, more about private partnership, uh, coming in. I don't know how that would work, but anyway, essentially, Stephen's shown some interest in our development of the project. Um, then, uh, after that meeting, we did talk, both Senator Mojo and I were online talking to, weren't you?
You just called me Senator Mojo.
Did I? Oh, my gosh, haven't done that for like a year. How about that? Commissioner. Were you part of that meeting or not?
Not.
Okay, all right, never mind. So anyway, we talked, talking with our lobbyists, uh, Winthrop and Weinstein, uh, good talk, weekly meeting, uh, Steve and I were talking to them. And, uh, anyway, uh, you already mentioned, uh, earlier today, we're on the Senate bonding bill, thanks to Senator Kupac, to make that mark and, uh, stop getting on, and that bonding bill will be potentially November twelfth or thirteenth. And, um, so back to the lobbyists, we'll be working with branding and, uh, raising, uh, for, try to get more involvement with other stakeholders. And then, um, uh, yesterday on the twentieth, I had a CAPLP, uh, HR committee meeting, uh, Senator, Senator, no, just kidding, um, Commissioner Mojo, uh, myself, and, uh, another on that committee, and we reviewed the bylaws changes, and we'll be having suggested changes to approve from the board on Thursday. Those meetings.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I attended a MetroCog prep meeting, as I was not able to attend the full board meeting, uh, that happened on the sixteenth, so worked with staff on that. On the sixteenth, I traveled to St. Louis County, uh, they had a, um, the day before their district meetings have a, um, you know, a tour of issues going on in the county, so appreciated being asked to attend that, and did attend the AMC District One meeting in Duluth the next day. And then yesterday, I attended the, uh, CAPLP, um, HR committee, and Commissioner Krabina presented that well. And then the last piece is I did have a meeting conversation with, um, Cale at the Chamber in regards to strategizing our legislative work, just, um, any additional loose ends that we need to wrap up in between two tours and in between, um, legislative session. Then I also attended the MinDOT Open House on the, um, input for the, uh, I-94, 336 corridor, um, plan, very, very well attended, and they had several hundreds of, uh, worth of comments. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the fifteenth, I had, uh, the Revised Partnership for Health with Clay and Becker County members, where we went over a couple of action. where we went over a couple of action things. We went over a revised joint powers agreement, a bylaws and delegation agreement, which we all approved of. And we are on track, coming the first of the year, to be ready for that public for health group to be running. And we also appointed an interim co-CHS administrator, so we have one from Clay County and one from Becker County for right now, so they can sign the agreements. But everything went pretty well. We got done everything we needed to get done there and our next meeting will be December with the two parties. If any, Mr. Ebinger was also there, so he's the chair of that, so he can add on anything else on that. And then on the 16th, I was also at the interview process for public, the public health director. Those were all my reports.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. On the 14th, I attended the PIC meeting that we discussed a couple of issues on Quinn Yeager's presentation and the two juvenile detention employees, both those passed. We just had a preliminary discussion on, on early retirement incentives and that's just something that we wanted to explore. No action was taken on it. On Wednesday, the 15th, I attended the meeting with CAS-Clay Interagency Coalition Against We discussed, there's, there, it's a new organization. We discussed the governance models that they're looking at, was presented. There was some discussion about basically looking for volunteers within the governance structure they want and looking at staffing some of the committees. And then we had a presentation from a, an expert on homelessness, and I don't have his name down because they took up the notebooks they gave us, because there was a problem with, with some of the information in it. They wanted to update, but it was, it was a good presentation. On Thursday, the 16th, I virtually attended the Rethink Mental Health and Substance Misuse Had a, Sarah Dixon Hackey, the Clay County Coordinator for Outreach, or Liaison, Outreach Liaison, gave a presentation on translation and interpretation for public service settings. We also discussed, Annabelle De Fault gave a present, presentation on rethinking mental health and substance misuse and discussed the findings from the data party they had earlier in the year. And on Thursday, no, I'm sorry, later that day, on Thursday, I attended the West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting. Discussed current budget stand, where we stand, looking at some of the population statistics and patterns that emerged from, from the West Central data that they collected. Discuss the food service contract and West Central juvenile programs that are currently going on. Mr. Campbell's the chair there, he probably has more insight into presenting on this. But moving on, later that day, had a public health interview, which we all attended. After that, I went to Lake Agassiz Regional Library Executive Committee, which, again, we were going through the budget and discussing our current formula used for the signatories. Yesterday, I had a Dancing Skies Area on Aging meeting I attended virtually. Again, a lot of the concern and the discussion revolved around grants that aren't being refunded in the coming year and funding for particularly the concerns of transportation and food. And then following that, had the quarterly restorative practice meeting. We had, we have just gotten a grant funding in place, the restorative practices got, and they had some of the, the two positions that are being presented and supported by those grants. They're both working in Morehead High School. Had a really good discussion about what their role, role is, what their hopes are, and just kind of where it's going. So it was a good meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. October 14th, I also attended the Personnel Issues Committee. We dealt with the SNBC program as well as the replacement of the juvenile detention employees. And staff brought forward to us some information about, several years ago, we did implement an early retirement incentive program and no action was taken on that. And we're at, I think we've just asked for some additional information from HR and Darren to bring forward in the future. So whether or not something develops remains to be seen, but that's kind of where that stood. That afternoon, we did hold the public health interview. That interview went well. And in full transparency, I think we, we saw through our HR department today that, or yesterday, that was put out that we're gonna open it up for interviews again. And it's not to say that the person that we had interviewed wasn't qualified because that individual was more than qualified and it just didn't work out for them, so, or that individual. So Steve may have more on that in his presentation, but I think in fairness to our public health employees, they need to know where, where we stand on that and where, where it's at and why it is where it is today. Then on the 16th, we also had the West Central Regional Juvenile Detention Meeting. Dave, Commissioner Ebinger gave a good report on that. We, he did, they, they did provide us with a secure residential program. And it outlines kind of the different things that, that they do in there that makes us, makes our, our secure program the, kind of the premier in the state. And as a matter of fact, I think there was some discussion, there were other members from other counties that were asking further, and I think other counties are trying to duplicate what we do because of the, how well it's done. So, and I don't know, maybe Steve, if this we can get to the other board members, maybe, huh? Yeah, so we can, maybe if you can give an electronic copy to them or a printout to each of them, that would be great. And the other, obviously, the, the numbers are really high right now in the facility. There's, there's good and bad to that. It's, I guess we'd like to have no kids in there, but from the standpoint of where it's at, it's, you know, we're, we're close to that capacity issue where our members take priority. And so there's, there are still a certain number of non-members in there. We're still anticipating reaching the revenues that we anticipated from non-members through the, through the process of 2025 budget is still on target to be like it was similarly. Now, one of the concerning things that I look at here on the 24-month look back, it's, Clay County is up 31% in the, in the 24-month look back. That's 31% of our, you know, we're up 31% of what we were. CAS County is up 24.5% and the rest are all either down or within the range of 3% to So, and obviously, that eventually down the road, that, that incorporates a larger percentage of, for Clay County to have on the budget, so. Uh, let's see, then. I think that concludes my report. It does. All right, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in the PIC meeting that has been well covered. That afternoon, Lori and I met with Todd from Ellers in preparation of the bond call, bond rating call that we had later in the week. On the 15th, had correspondence with MCIT on several liability issues. On the 15th, had our, had our weekly meeting with representatives from City Dilworth and Morehead on the casino. On the 16th, I was, I was invited by City Morehead to participate in a meeting with the White Earth Reservation. They are beginning some initial discussions about the needs of the casino as far as utilities and what that would potentially look, look like, so there's more to come on that. Again, participated on that afternoon in the public health director interviews that we've been discussed. And after that, did participate in the bond rating call with S, for S and P. That went well, we did provide some additional information. They've, Ellers did put out some additional information about the outlook for the re, the rebonding and continues to look strong for, for that and for, for the bonds that we have. 17th, participated in the non-secured juvenile legislative meeting and the lobbyist meeting that's been covered. Yesterday morning, I participated in a meeting and with representatives from Dilworth, Glendon Holly and Barnesville about, about the dispatch services. I was notified by their administration that we, that Clay County will be receiving a joint resolution stating that they do not wish to pay for additional dispatch services after the contract, but that they may be willing to look at a sunsetting contract over the next three years. And so more to come on that. Just a reminder for our, our employees and those on the campus, on Thursday, there's going to be, this is fire prevention month and there's going to be a fire drill at 10:00 a.m. And so please follow, follow our policy at that time. And then I did provide each member of the board a handout that I received this week in the mail from Sherburne County about their, their requests for, for counties to look to sign a resolution to participate in the Minnesota Nuclear Energy Alliance. And so, and speaking with Mr. Mr. Chair, would bring that forward again for any input on the board, if the wish would be to, to bring this back at a later meeting.
I'd like to see it brought back. All right. All right, let's, can we have that placed on the agenda for? I don't know that it's.
I don't think it's time sensitive. I think that they're hoping, much like our legislative work, they're trying to get that, that support prior to the legislative session.
I agree with Commissioner Bear, I'm fine with it coming back. It's, it aligns with conversations that we've had in regards to it.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. I do have one additional item that I did not bring up. I did, yesterday, I did attend the Prairie Lakes Audit Committee meeting regarding their results of their annual state audit. And that was very well, they got a unqualified opinion as well, which is the best opinion you can get. Couple of very minor little things in there, similar to what we see oftentimes at Clay County. They were directly, they were directed more towards Otter Tail County and they were minor things that Otter Tail County has responded to. So it all, all was well in the financial department and Prairie Lakes solid waste. Darren, or Brian, excuse me, I'll go to you first. No, nothing, okay, Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 14th, I also attended the PIC meeting, which has already been covered. Also spent a lot of the day preparing for union negotiations and gathering some data from other counties on some of our positions. On October 15th, I worked on the early retirement calculations and reports and using different criteria. Commissioner Campbell, you kind of alluded to that already, so maybe I can present that at the next PIC meeting, what we can find. October 16th, had a meeting with Quinn on some union questions. Some of that was already covered in the SNBC today. Also had social workers' third negotiations on the 16th. And I also participated in the public health director interview. On the 17th, I was out. On the 20th, I had a meeting with Anna on various things and also worked some more on the union costing sheet. So that was my week, weekend review.
Sarah? Nothing for you, okay. All right, we are adjourned.